I'll kick you out.
I'm going to call to order the March 5th Special Meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education. This is a meeting held in public for the purpose of the community to learn more about this business, and it's not to be considered a community public hearing. There's a time for public comment during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item 3, which is immediately after the pledge of allegiance. So if anybody has a public comment, please fill out that card right now. With that being said, it is time for the pledge. Holly, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, where we stand: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. They always want to see if we have any public comment cards. Nope, okay, no public comment cards. So we will then move on to our candidate interview portion. We again have Mr. David Phillips from the Leadership Institute here, and he will explain to everyone how this evening will work.
Well, welcome again. For the first timers here, welcome. Just go through the process quickly. Two interviews tonight, both approximately 75 minutes from when they start. Try to keep them close to that. Back at the table, there should have been a full sheet and a half sheet. These are comment sheets that go to the Board of Education, and you can write comments about each candidate if you'd like. They take time to read those. On the half sheet are questions that you can submit that may be used in the second round of interviews. First rounds are always scripted to make sure that we keep all discriminatory factors out of it and all candidates therefore get the same questions. So that's what we'll do. The Board will take probably a five to 10-minute break in between each interview for a quick bathroom break or stretch their legs, whatever you need to do. So Board of Education, any questions? Okay, I'll go retrieve our first meeting. I would like to introduce Mr. Rick Seager to the Board of Education and the community here. He is currently serving as a superintendent of Water believe schools.
All right, we're on.
All right, well, good evening.
Good evening.
On behalf of the Forest Hills Board of Education, I'd like to welcome you to our public schools, and I'll take a minute to describe our format. The interview table will take approximately 75 minutes. Towards the end, you will have a chance to ask us any questions, and you will also have the opportunity to give a closing statement if you would like. With that being said, I will go into my little thing here, which is that choosing the next superintendent is a responsibility of critical importance to the board. We know that being the superintendent of a K through 12 public school is an enormous and unique job. We need to find the right person for this moment and for the future to lead our district. We're ready to learn and excited about it, and we hope that we can learn as much as we can about you during this interview process. We have appreciated the input of staff, families, community, students throughout this process up to this point so far, and we're ready to move forward and get started. And I get the first question here.
All right. Let me get my mic adjusted so everybody can hear. Are we good?
Yep.
Is it back? Let's roll.
Okay, while we have had the opportunity to review your application materials, our audience members have not. Can you please briefly review your background and share what causes you to be interested in this position at this point in your career?
Yeah, sure. So this is my 34th year in public education. So it's been kind of a good run. I didn't come to public education right away. After I graduated from college, I worked as an engineer, environmental engineer for a company in South Bend called Tenia Paboni. And it was there where I really learned a lot about systems design and ISO 9000 and Alder's GQM, Kaizen, and other continuous improvement models. But I also was coaching football at a local school and learned that I really loved kids. And I just kind of waited for my opportunity. I completed some other coursework, came into education. My wife at the time was an educator as well, and we made some lifestyle choices to make that happen, and that's how I got in. And so, you know, I've, I think my career has spanned about every single kind of school you could possibly be in. I've been in suburban, rural, urban, you know, poor, wealthy, school districts, and I've done just about every job you can in education, including drive the bus, sweep the floors, and mop the gym, strike the field, all that stuff. So I've had an opportunity to do a lot of stuff. I've spent the last, since 2004, so the last, you know, cash, was it 18 years now? No, 10, you know, 20 years almost, you know, in administration. Prior to that, I had a two-year run as a central office administrator in Richmond as well. And I taught in the classroom for 12 years as a math teacher, a science teacher, and a computer science teacher. So I've had a lot of different leadership roles, from assistant principal to principal to central office, technology director, curriculum director, Title I and federal state federal programs director, and that's given me a big background on what it takes to run a school district. Been in small schools and I've been in big schools. In Kalamazoo, 12,500, 12,800 kids, Kalamazoo Promise District. My job was to improve the most difficult to improve schools. I also operated magnet school program and was in charge of the school improvement for all 26 schools in the district. So I had some experience with large schools. As you know, I'm a small school superintendent. I'm in my fifth year at Water believe Public Schools. We're just about 1,500 kids and being responsible for all aspects of the operations of the district. That's kind of what I do. And I have a very good administrative team that I have developed into, I think, a rock-solid team that's just moving that district forward. And I'm, at this point, you know, you ask me, what brings me here? And I think really it is the challenge. For me, it's the challenge and the next step in my career to be a part of a district like Forest Hills that has had success for a long, long period of time and still has, always has room to grow and to improve outcomes and opportunities for kids in a district like Forest Hills. I think is as challenging as anything you possibly be. And I look forward to the opportunity to do that here in Forest Hills because I believe this district, while awesome and excellent right now, just like everybody and everything else in the world, always has opportunity to move forward and do better and have more opportunities for kids. Again, my career is boxed with systems design and development and administrative development and, you know, school improvement. And so I think I bring the kind of background that Forest Hills can benefit from. So it's really not about, you know, what's, you know, I've got a house and I've got the job, and, you know, it's really not about that. It's about expanding, you know, it's about stretching myself and helping to stretch Forest Hills into being the premier, either premier school district in the entire country, quite frankly.
Thank you. Look at them. Okay. Given your research and preparation before coming to this interview, what do you believe are two or three of the most critical, long-term priorities that we would need to address here? And how would your background and skills help us address those priorities?
So, you know, one thing I did notice in my research about Forest Hills is the declining enrollment. And I think that that brings a whole host of issues. Not, you know, not just in terms of capacity, but also in terms of finance, in terms of what programs can be offered, and what in terms of, you know, what things you can do moving forward in terms of opportunities for kids. Moving from 10,000 to 9,000 kids in about a 12-years span of time, I'm sure has had a significant impact on the budget and would continue to do so. In that period of time, there's also been, you know, a growth of, you know, opportunity schools brought online, new programs added. I'm sure that has an impact as well. But, you know, in order to address that particular issue, I think you really need to, we really need to get a common vision and understand a common, strong central vision about what we want the school to be. Declining enrollment is happening all over the state. You know, there's demographic reasons for that, there's economic reasons for that, but school districts don't have to be hampered by that. You know, the last two school districts where I worked in, we had declining enrollment in terms of our resident population, but we managed to maintain enrollment by growing our market base. But frankly, we just grew our market base because, you know, schools of choice are schools of choices. And having opportunities for kids is what is attracting people into schools. Facilities and opportunities, those are the things. Research is showing us that there are two biggest issues that bring kid people into districts, which is one of the main ways you grow your district is our opportunities for kids and facilities. And so those will be things that we would need to take a look at. So when they get there, you need a strong, common, and understood central vision. There has to be a why, and that why has to transcend the what. So, you know, I think every school knows how to do school. You know how to do school. We've been doing this for 100 and something years, and certainly Forest Hills has been around for a long time. We continuously align our work with that vision and why, you know, why we are trying to be excellent. The other thing that I saw was embracing innovation. In today's educational world, we need to embrace innovation, and we need to be, we need to look for different ways to do things. And as our schools become more diverse and our communities become more diverse, we need to think differently about how we are addressing the needs of our individual students. The one-size-fits-all school district of the past, and again, I'm not in that, you know, casting any aspersions about Forest Hills. I'm saying in general, the one-size-fits-all school district that does, you know, secondary it this way, elementary it this way, whatever, those are anachronisms today, and they're not going to grow. They're just not. We need to embrace innovation, have a systems approach to our work, and that system starts from the top down with a common, strong central vision. The third thing, I think, is we got to remember who our clients are. Our clients are our kids and our families. That's who we serve. And far too often, in my experience in education, schools become complacent and they become organizational centric, organization-centric instead of student-centric and family-centric. And again, I think that if we keep that as part of our vision and keep that as part of what we're doing moving forward, who we are serving and why, we can address those issues around enrollment, around opportunity, around advancing the outcomes even from a high base.
Thank you. So effective and timely communication is vital to the success of a school district. Would you describe for us the type of communication students, staff, and parents should expect to receive from you?
First of all, a district, any district, has to have a communications plan and has to have a model. There has to be a philosophy, a vision around what you communicate and why. Personally, I follow what I call the three P model, push, pull, and profile. You know, you get a part of that plan, and how you execute a communication plan really comes down to push communication, pull communications, and profile-type communication. What do I mean by that? Push is where you are promoting, informing, giving, directing information to people. Here's what's happening. It's proactive in nature. Here's what we're going to do. Here's where, you know, what programs are going on. Here's the handbook. Take a look at, you know, that kind of thing where you're giving information out. Push-type communication. Pull-type communication is where you're attracting people to participate in the process. So you need to have a plan and a strategy for that. And the third type of communication, third P in that three P model is profiling, and that is understanding the experience, understanding what the needs are, gathering feedback, giving, you know, getting information from the community about how things are working. And I say community in general because profile communication happens internal and it happens external. We want to know the, we want to understand the experience of our teachers. We want to understand the experience of our kids. We want to understand the experience of our community. We want to understand the experience of our legislators. So profile communication comes in all different ways, internal and external. Same thing with pull communication, where we draw people in in order to participate in the communication process. That can be internal, both internal and external, as can push communication. We just need to have an active plan for all of those. The purpose of that communication really is about building trust. In the vacuum that occurs in the absence of communication and clear compelling communication, you lose trust. That's just natural. It's human nature, it's organization nature. So we were trying to build trust to that and again, we keep that as the common theme in terms of what we're doing. We're trying to inform people, build trust, transparency, and understanding. It's important that our communication is culturally proficient, that we recognize the diversity in the community, that we recognize the diversity in our audience, and that we address it. You know, when the community, most of the communities I've worked in, there's been a strong Hispanic influence. I've worked in a lot of, not most of them, but many of them. There's been a strong Hispanic influence with our families, working the farms. We don't send communications out to them in Spanish, and we're not, we're not addressing them. They don't read it, they don't know it, they don't, they don't hear it. We don't, we've got, in all those three methods, we've got to do that. You know, Kalamazoo, obviously, that's even more diverse, where we have all kinds of different, you know, there were 19 different languages spoken in the neighborhood school where my kids, neighborhood elementary school where my kids were. 19 different languages spoken. The district has to have a plan for addressing that, so your cultural vision. At the micro level, when you talk about what you can expect, I believe in developing key communicators at every level. Superintendent level, when I talk about key communicators, I'm talking about people in the community that you reach out to to get information out. So you have a profile of the type of person you want that can communicate for you, and you give them information. There are certain people that I know in my community that if I tell them something's happening at the school, within 45 minutes, half the town's going to know what's going on. I know who those people are, and I try to find them and I connect with them. That communication is really important. So developing a team of key key communicators is really important in a formal way. All buildings, every building, and they may already hear Forest Hills, but in my vision, all buildings have parent advisory committees and student advisory committees. And central office has a parent advisory committee and a student advisory committee. Because again, that's how we do pull and profile communication is with them. And also some push communication with student advisory committees. You bring 16 kids in, you know, and tell them what's going on, the, you know, that are from grade six to 12 or whatever, they're part of it. That information's going to be out by lunch of what's going on. So you can, you can make things happen. Remembering again that the key is to build trust and transparency in your community.
Excellent, thanks. Next, what do you think the unique challenges of leading a district with three high schools would be? And how would you address some of those challenges?
Yeah, so my understanding is it's not just like three high schools. It's sort of like three separate entities really here in the district. And that is challenging because you've got different cultures. You've got different community cultures, neighborhood cultures, community cultures. I do think that that creates some challenges. Around that, really, the biggest to me, the biggest challenge is creating a common vision. You know, you, it's really easy, it seems to me, and again, I'm not trying to explain to you what your district is. You know that better than I do. But it seems to me that when you're in this kind of environment, it's very easy to have like three separate school districts with three separate cultures, three separate directions, in the absence of a very strong central vision and a strong central plan for what you're going to do. And that that could show up biggest in terms of opportunities for kids at high schools. It's kind of difficult to create a common vision in all those high schools without that strong central voice. Seems to me like it would be difficult to replicate the best of as well in every building. Again, without some intentionality. What are the things that are the best about Eastern? And how do they show up in Northern? Is there an intentional plan for doing that? Does everybody start operating in their own little silo? Who has opportunities, are opportunities available for kids based on proximity to programs? Like who's the closest one to the Career Tech Center? Are those the kids that get in? What about the other kids? Who's involved, you know, who's closest to campuses for dual enrollment? And in middle college, you know, who's promoting that? Is one school promoting that more than the other? You know, where maybe some kids are encouraged to participate in, you know, early post-secondary enrollment options. And in another school, the counseling staff isn't really pushing that for kids. Again, without diving in and looking at the individual, I can just imagine those are some of the problems that you see. Having a strong common vision that directs that work, creating opportunities for all kids, and so that there's equity and equity of opportunity in the three high schools, middle school for that matter too, and that you're replicating the best of in each school in all schools.
Thank you. Please give us an example of a successful educational initiative or program you have initiated in your career, and what were the results?
I mean, I've, I've been very blessed to have opportunity. My senior administrators over my time as a committee in the district have been very generous to me, giving me opportunities to do things, innovative things, systemic things. Probably the most successful program that I, when I, it started in Bronson, and we replicated it in Schoolcraft, and that was standards-based teaching and learning model along with what was a very innovative, unbalanced trimester schedule. Explain what those things are. Standards-based teaching and learning is not just about, hey, we look at the standards and then teach to them. But it's we actually report on standards, we track the standards, we hold accountability to standards, we narrow the standards down to what really matters and pack standards. There's a process to get there, and it's a very rich, deep process. And it takes everybody to participate in that. The, so it does include things like standards-based teaching, standards-based accountability, and standards-based rating at every level. That we implemented in Bronson, that we implemented in Schoolcraft very effectively. Coupled that with the unbalanced trimester in the high schools. That unbalanced trimester went, you know, typical, traditional trimester schedule in school, high schools are 60 days, three 60-day trimesters. These were two 75-day trimesters followed by a 30-day trimester. And the purpose of that, we treated the two 75-day trimesters like traditional semesters where kids earned a half credit per. And then the third trimester were exploratory advancement, credit recovery, and for kids who were involved in post-secondary, third semester, post-secondary enrollment. So in both of those districts, we saw a complete collapse of student retakes, of recycling kids through classes because they simply didn't fail. We were tracking them by standards. We got to the third trimester, we knew what standards they were strong in weekend and where we had to recover that credit so we could keep kids on track. And that's on the lower end. On the higher end, we saw kids who had opportunities to explore things that they just wouldn't have in typical schedules in small schools. Moreover, the kids who were involved in post-secondary enrollment options could get into that third, that first summer, that first summer term. We had, we had, I mean, the average high school graduate at Schoolcraft had 18 college credits, the average. Graduating 100 kids a year, 1,800 credits, college credits, that was the average. Some of those kids were graduating with associate's degrees before they got to high school diploma. In part because we opened the door. We created a program that opened the door for them. Currently, when I got to Water believe, we had nine kids in post-secondary enrollment options. Oh, nine, period. We're about a 70% pass rate. This last semester, we had 92 kids complete college courses at a 99% pass rate. That's in a school of 380, you know, 358 kids, you know, 92 of them. We've got 96 second semester. Get out of the way and give them support. Right, get out of the way, give them support, that's it, give them support. Why do they, why do we have 99% pass rate? Because we support them. Why did they do this? Because we opened the door and let them do it. It's just that simple. So I think though that unbalanced trimester with the standards-based teaching and learning model have been, you know, at that point, it goes to two districts. I'm in the throes of doing that in a third, and we're having tremendous success with it. We're already seeing great outcomes for kids, so.
Thank you. What opportunities do you believe budget limitations present? In tough financial times, what are your top priorities?
Well, priorities. The biggest opportunity that we get from, from tough financial times, I would say tough anything, the biggest opportunity is a chance to reprioritize. Right, we have the reason, the rationale, the drive, the why. Why do we want to reprioritize? Everything's great. Eh, no, we got some tough times coming. We got to reprioritize. What are we going to focus on? So that's a huge opportunity that comes, gives you the necessary, the clout, the need, the why in order to reprioritize what you do. So I do think that's really important. Also, the kind of, to come back to your core vision, what are we really about? If we're struggling financially, we've got to really think about what are we really about? What's really important? What do we really want to get accomplished here? Because at that point then, we can sort of zero-based budget around how do we get there? What's our core vision? What are we trying to accomplish? What are the most important things that we need to do here in this district and maintain? And then we zero-based budget around this. We built up a budget instead of tear down a budget. And I think that's really critical. You know, we can do that. And I also believe that once you've done that, you've identified, you've prioritized what the things you want, you've identified your vision clearly, what you want to accomplish, what your priorities are. You zero-base budget around it, then you implement and monitor. Again, this is just strategic planning 101, but you implement and monitor and make sure you're staying on track. If you've got a good clear focus, you've got a clear vision, you will grow out of those tough financial times. And I've seen it happen again and again and again. So I've been in this business a long time, and certainly, most of my career has been in a time of financial constriction in public education. We talked about, you know, where the revenue has come and gone. But regardless, I don't know, Michigan Futures came out with a report in January. It said Michigan's inflation-adjusted spending in K-12 is 16% lower than it was in 2000. That, that's probably true from my experience. We've had to, especially in schools that have struggled, you know, that had low revenues, prioritize, stay focused on the business, monitor and implement, and grow our way out of it by being innovative, being innovative. That's the other thing. What can you do? What are the opportunities? You have to innovate your way out of the crisis. You have to. You've got to do something different than what you've always done. What you always did got you there. So you've got to innovate. Prioritize, you know, get your vision, prioritize, innovate, and then monitor your plan.
Okay, Rick, it's my turn. From respect, with respect to the planning process in the district, how you set direction, how should we incorporate the stakeholder input? Stakeholders being parents, community members, students, staff members?
Yeah, so I'll refer back to the communication plan because I think that's really important. The push-pull profile, you get involved, you have a plan for profiling. That's profile engagement, profile communication, how do we get in with it? profile communication, how do we get input? We have to have a clear plan, and I would work with the communications department to develop that. I would work with the voting principals to pull that together for them, we have to have a clear plan. Because you have to pull information in in order to strategic plan. So you, there's, I've never been and never will be, I believe in strong central direction and strong central vision. That doesn't mean I believe in heavy-handed administration. To get there, you have to be collaborative, you have to open the doors to input. And especially in a public school with a diverse population and a broad perspective of ideas, ideologies, and perspectives. You've got to be collaborative, and you've got to pull people together. So surveys, focus groups, analytics groups, lots of data to the table of where we're at, what we need to do, and where we want to be. And it seems, I'm very steep in adaptive schools, cognitive coaching, which are psychology models and continuous improvement models for, that are sort of year-round education, that have been adaptive education. And all of that is about developing a collaborative, professional learning culture. I think probably my two most influential authors would be Noel Titchey from University of Michigan, professor who wrote a book called The Leadership Engine, where he talks about collaborative processes in the development of leaders. And Peter Sande and his work on schools of learn, learning organizations, you know, that all come out of fifth discipline, which was a seminal work. All of that is about developing collaborative cultures where people provide input, you give feedback and information to people, and develop your plans collaboratively. Active profile communication, that'd be part, deep part of the plan.
Great, thank you. It seems my question just moves, you know, flows smoothly into this next one here. Describe your leadership experience with working with diverse constituents, thinking social, cultural, economic diversity. Tell us how you work to develop educational equity and culture of inclusion for all.
Yeah, right, so again, I feel like I've been very blessed because I've been in a lot of different schools where I've been able to engage with a lot of different constituents in a lot of different communities. So you're, it's very important in a public body that we create a culture of inclusivity, where everybody feels like they have an equal say, that their voice matters. So having been in school districts where, you know, we have bicultural, monocultures, bicultural, and multicultural, I've had to adapt my leadership style around all of that. I would say this, that the one consistent theme has been that collaborative, open, listening model. People, if you bring people together and give them an opportunity to have their voice heard, they will feel like they're part of it, they will feel like they're empowered to be with you. And that's been my experience. So create that collaborative culture, invite people in, pull them in, let their voice be heard. If we need to provide accommodations for that equity side, then we bring the accommodations to bear, right? So we've got a, you know, we've got a diverse community with 19 different languages being involved. You better have some people that can translate there, right? In order for everybody to, in order to create understanding. And I do think that, you know, there's two big, I'm going to bring them out now, I was going to say, but it's sort of two big mantras that I've always, I teach my administrators this, I, you know, I kind of beat them over the head with it, like you have to believe in these things. Clarity precedes competence, and support precedes accountability. And the reason I bring that up in this case and not necessarily around administration and teaching is that what we're talking about is if folks are going to really understand what we're trying to do in our school, we have to be clear. And if we're going to be clear, then we've got to make sure we accommodate everybody's voice. How do we have to do that? So clarity will precede confidence in the community about what our school is going to do. And that support that precedes accountability, before we implement programs that affect their kids, we need to know what support we're going to provide for them. And that would be for the parents as well as the students. That's how you build equity. By the way, equity is not equality. And we, you know, I'm going to come back to the question about the high schools, right? Yet I'm not, I'm being a generalist here, not specific to Forest Hills, but you've got three high schools and they're all kind of doing the same thing. You've got equality, which might not have equity because the communities can be very different. So how are we measuring that? How are we determining whether or not we are giving kids the experience they deserve in order to get to the same outcomes? Well, we've got to, we've got to make sure we are studying that and analyzing and reviewing it and being honest about what we find out. One school has opportunities, another school doesn't, why do we tolerate that? If some kids are getting better than other kids, why do we tolerate that? We can do nothing. So again, equity and equality are not the same thing. Equity is what do I do to make sure kids get to the same place? And that may be more for some kids than others. And again, by the way, I just have to say this, that's harder to do in schools that are very high achieving and generally wealthy. Because a lot of times those kids get lost, the ones that really need a lot of support. I also say that there are a lot of kids maybe that are doing well but aren't reaching their full potential. We need to identify who those are and lift them up even higher. And identify that, again, through data, through research, through study, intentional. Principals are implementers, they have to know these things. And the superintendent needs to teach them and be able to teach them how to give that information so that we are equitable, not equal, necessarily, at work.
Great, thank you. What has been the most unpopular administrative decision you've had to make? And how did you handle the reaction to this decision?
Yeah, just one. It's lonely at the time. The most unpopular one? I would say the one that's sticking out in my mind right now is moving from a, is we made a schedule adjustment at my current high school, high school in the district where I'm superintendent now, coming out of COVID. So when I got there in 2019, they had a schedule, they had six classes, and then an end-of-the-day, like 30-minute advisory, they called GRI. And that was their answer to an MTSS model where they would let kids move around and get help and support, maybe take a test. That evolved prior to my time, they had a seven-period day, and they still had 28 credit-bearing opportunities, is that me or is that something else?
It's the mindset.
Okay, I'm a little too close. Okay, they had 28 credit-bearing opportunities. Can you all hear me here? All right, good. We had 28 credit-bearing opportunities, they had 28 credit-bearing opportunities, 24 required credits, right? Nice little four dap credit for kids. When they shrunk that down to the six-period day and GRI, they kept the 24 credits. That would have been going for a couple of years before I got there. I really didn't have any time to analyze that before COVID hit. So I came into the district, I had no business manager, the high school principal was on his way out, on his way out the door, and he said to me, you got to get rid of GRI. And I'm like, I'm not getting rid of anything until I study it. By, we had a triple, the first, I don't know if you remember the triple E, the equine encephalitis thing that went around in 2019. The first, the first death in the state occurred in my district with one of my kids. That was in the fall. And then COVID hit, you know, I mean, we, yeah, anyway. Didn't really pay any attention to it. We went into a whole different model of teaching and learning for the next two years, with your next year, where we had really three different tiers. That year we came back, I had had time to look at some data. And you could see how, from the time they implemented that program, how graduation rate had steadily dropped, from the low, from the 93% down to about 78%. Literally was creating dropouts. Imagine, you have 24 opportunities for credits, 26 because they counted GRI, but really it was 24 because you can't retake a class during that, and 24 credits required. First time a kid fails English 9 or English 10, they're no longer on track for graduation. The other thing they had was this sort of unwritten protocol in the high school that if a kid failed a class, they didn't have to take that, they couldn't take that class with the same teacher. Which was interesting because they had no split classes, right? You had one US history teacher, one English 9 teacher, right? So there were seven of these kids into virtual classrooms. So I took dynamite to that, and I said, we're not going to do that anymore. We're going back to a seven-period day, and we will begin to study a new schedule that opens opportunities for kids, that does not hurt them anymore, that does, that gets rid of this problem. And since then, our graduation rate has gone back up into the low 90s again. But that was incredibly, and continues to be incredibly unpopular because they want a new schedule. Well, we're working on it, but we're also implementing a whole lot of other things too. And as we get to that, we will get to it. That was the most unpopular. I know it's a long story, a long-winded story, but that's the one that's in my mind right now. Really what it comes down to is they had to teach six classes instead of seven. That was really it. And for the most part, they had two preps instead of one. You know, in a small school, it's almost unheard of, but, you know, it was unpopular.
Yeah, great, thank you.
And I do think, if I just may, I think that because it was, and the reason it was unpopular was because it was by fiat. And that's not normally my mode of operation, and it's not what they want. I had to make a decision and do something now because we were at a crisis point, and we were going to, we were hurting kids. And it wasn't time to scramble again or to build up. But as soon as we did it, I opened the door for study. And we do have a study team that's working on it, we just had to settle on like that, so.
Excellent. To pivot a little, what role does a school district play in student mental health and well-being? Please describe your experiences in these areas.
So my experiences, there are any where from having an onsite mental health professional in every building like we had in Kalamazoo, to what we have now, which we had in my smaller district. You know, we have two social workers and three behavioral specialists that all have been onboarded since I got there, with the sole purpose of supporting student mental health. I do believe that what we're finding today is more and more and more kids coming to school with mental health issues. We can, you know, we can argue a lot or debate the reasons for that, but it's just a reality, and schools are going to have to take some responsibility for that. The legislature has provided resources for us to do that. So our, you know, my district has applied for all of them. We've got 31O, 31N, you know, we go after everything we can get to try and help support that money, or get money to help support that. But we brought on three behavioral specialists, two school social workers since we've been there. We are going to add an elementary counselor as soon as the 31N money comes through, whenever that's going to come through. I don't know when that's going to come through from the state, that's a new categorical. But as soon as it comes through, we're going to add another elementary counselor. So we'll have a counselor in every one of our buildings, we'll have two behavior, I'm sorry, three behavioral specialists and two school social workers. We need to do that, we need to take responsibility for it. Bigger schools might have a school-based, you might have a site-based clinic that does that. I raised a bipolar daughter. I know what it's like, I know what it's like, and I know how hard it can be. I know that the challenges at school, challenges at home for families, if there's a way we can provide support for them, we need to do that. I think also, beyond the direct support we offer kids, it would be great if we could offer support to families that are dealing with this in their household. Well, it's felt like, we were winging it, and we were too highly educated. We had four master's degrees in our household. We had, you know, we're public educators, both of us, we worked with kids all the time. It's still a struggle to deal with a child that has no health issues. I don't care who you are or what you know, you don't know what it's like until you have it in your house and you deal with it then. And so how do, you know, how do we support, how can we support our families and our communities around that?
It's my turn. So, I'm trying to do the conversation. What strategies have you used to retain and recruit and retain talented, diverse staff?
Yeah, that's really an important piece right now, more so than maybe ever before. We've had to get very, very creative in districts, in the last two districts, I'd look at a couple of months. And, you know, salary schedules is what they are, and a lot of time is based on total revenue and what you can do. We did increase, we were, when I got to Waterville, we were bottom three in the county. We did create a very innovative master schedule for our teachers that is benchmarked, tied bar to the county. So that as revenues go up, we basically don't negotiate salary anymore, as revenues go up, we add money into the schedule in order to do that. It's innovative, it is also, it also allows us to be able to predict kind of next year's output, our next year's expenses, a lot better than a traditional master schedule. But that allowed us to go from the bottom three in the county to consistently top four in the county. Simply moving the money around. We had a one-time infusion into the budget to make that happen, and now it's just a matter of maintaining. So we don't have these big wild swings in our payroll from year to year, you know, based just on single-year seniority because of the way we engineer that. So that's one way is be competitive, right? Be competitive salary-wise, be competitive. We added, we added benefits to our, you know, to be more competitive, you know, support pieces, education pieces. In Waterville, I believe there's two districts in the entire state of Michigan, one of us, we are one of them, that give teachers full credit for being National Board certified. In our district, if you are National Board certified, you can jump the master schedule. The masters pay the master's degree schedule and get a thousand more than the master's schedule. So a bachelor's degree, a teacher with a bachelor's degree and National Board certification is paid more than a thousand dollars a year more than a teacher with a master's. Unpopular decision early on for some people, said I spent all these years getting my master's degree. But if you're looking down the road on recruitment and retention, down the road, at what this is going to mean for teachers in the future, National Board certification is every bit as rigorous as the master's degree programs I know of for educators. Every bit as rigorous, maybe not the ones in administration, certainly the ones in teaching. And it has to be renewed in order to be maintained. So we get teachers in this process of continuous improvement of themselves, National Board certified, they have all the skills that our master's degree teachers have, why not pay them that, then we retain them? It does, right now, the way it is with Waterville, is it does put rope handcuffs on them a little bit. Because if they wanted to go to the neighboring district and they don't have that master's degree, they're not getting that type of pay. But I could, you know, I love that model, and I think it's doing great. And that program is very, very rigorous and very, it's also, it's in-service practical. Right, it's not, I go to take some classes, take some tests, and I get a credential. It is, I study my kids over a period of time, I do things to make the process better for them, and you know, make the learning better for them, and I measure the outcomes and I report that. It's more in-service focused, and it's more enduring. People that have gone through that have told me that is fantastic. I work, I was on the design team for a statewide program called Talent Together, still am on that board. That's a, Talent Together is a consortium of ISVs plus state that have put together registered apprenticeship programs for bringing teachers into the profession. So if you, last, last May, Western Michigan's University graduated six, count six, secondary certified teachers, six, totally. This is Western normal school. This is the College of Education by history and going back to the early 20th century, that graduated six secondary educated, secondary training certified teachers. Danville is not that far ahead of them. The college, that model of teacher prep is almost done. Where kids are going to spend 40, 50, 60, 70,000 dollars getting a teacher degree and then going to a 40,000, 45,000 dollar a year job. And unless we massively increase the pay rate, which is out of our control as public educators, just local districts massively increase entry-level salaries, we're not competing for those kids anymore based on these programs. So Talent Together is shifting that mindset to a more apprenticeship model. I have eight parapros and secretaries that are in Talent Together right now, earning credentials. They still got to get their coursework. They still gotta get their coursework done, but Talent Together pays for it. So while they're working for us as our employee, we're paying them, we're as our employee, their coursework is getting paid for them, they still do the coursework. When they go to their internship, instead of paying the college twelve credits or fourteen credits or eighteen credits, whatever that is, they get paid eighty percent of the teacher's salary while they are apprenticing for a year in a student teacher. So now instead of unpaid, or I paid to have my internship, it's a paid internship model and the coursework's paid for you, all through the Talent Together program. The legislature, I was just today, just today in Lansing lobbying two different legislators on maintaining the funding for that program. Because I do believe that that's going to generate more teachers for us. The thing I like, one of the things I really like about that program is that it's people that are in the career field now, paraprofessionals, bus drivers, you know, support staff, that want to do this. But all they, that I have, all of them, they come from working-class backgrounds, they simply don't have the money or the time to be able to commit to go get any traditional education program. But they can get into the field this way. They know my kids, they love my kids, they know our culture. They, they, they're committed, and we're giving them something that's going to make them loyal to this profession for years and years and years. And so I've been working on that now for three years with that consortium, and we continue to look for those kind of opportunities.
Thank you. Love that information. We will keep on offering quality programs in everything we do, including the fine arts, career technical, athletics. How do you develop curriculum and opportunities for students that meet their needs equitably, but also while maintaining quality throughout all of that variety of program?
Are you suggesting a conflict between those in some way?
Just a lot, right? We have a lot of different programs and you want them all to run successfully.
Okay. So you're talking about curriculum-type programs, not necessarily actually curriculum?
I think all of it.
Okay, okay, alright. And the potential conflict between those, like if you have to pare down, where do you pare? Right? And it does, if you have to pare down, it does come down to priorities and the maintenance of excellence. I think more important than having everything is what you do, you do really, really well. And sometimes that is, there can be conflicts between those two things. Forest Hills is probably a district that's used to having, but ain't anymore. Everything, all of it, and that's great. That is wonderful for kids. But if you're not doing it very, very well, you know, that's probably problematic and it's time to decide what we want to do really well. So, you know, that's part of strategic planning. That's part of, again, that pool-type communication where what are the things that really matter? What are the things that really matter to our community and to our constituency? And what are the things that we're going to invest in to be awesome? And that might lead to office sometimes, I guess. I don't need to, I think that's implied.
Thank you. Please describe your experiences with millage renewals, bond proposals, and sinking funds. Were these experiences successful? Why are we not?
Yeah, so I got a lot of experience with that in different districts, of being on planning teams, running campaigns. Successful, some successful, some not. You know, managing the budgets that come from them, working with architects and construction managers on the development side and on the construction side. So I had a lot of experience with that. We did run two bond issues and we asked for, we did an update of our facilities plan in Water Valley. We asked for the largest single dollar value bond issue in the history of the school. We failed by sixty votes, but we're going to go back. We've already done our surveys. We kind of know what's going to be, what will be supported. We'll go back in, in May of twenty-five with a very appropriate program. We had, in lines of Kalamazoo, we had multiple bonds and they, you know, I was part of the planning committee for those, part of the campaign committee. And obviously, the programs that I operated, the magnet schools that I managed, I had to oversee instruction that was going on in those. So I had a lot of experience in that. I had not run my own personal campaign yet that was successful, but I've only run one, so. And it's a tough to, tough-to-pass district. They ask for the biggest dollar amount, but I do believe it'll pass the next time. I feel very confident in that.
Can you provide us an example of a time in your career when you made a mistake? And you received constructive feedback and then were asked to take corrective action? What process and communication plan did you implement and what was the outcome?
You know, I think for me, the the feedback I got that was the most, that was hardest, that made the biggest difference for me was when I was in Jackson. I was asked to oversee, I wrote a grant to the Michigan Department of Career Development. It was a career pathway grant we had done an implementation when I was in River Valley. I was asked to write the grant, oversee, manage a project for the district, give them release time to do it, to implement a career pathway model at Jackson Northwest High School. And I was young. I wasn't administrator. I had been a central office minister for a couple of years. I went back to teaching and coaching and then came into this role as a project manager, school improvement. I was in Philly School Improvement, school improvement, team leader. And then the mayor superintendent called me in one day and kind of gave me, you know, come to Jesus about being too pushy, about not being collaborative enough, about, you know, making, making people uncomfortable with the press. I was very ambitious, very driven, very passionate about what we were doing. But I had not done what I needed to do to lay the groundwork and build consensus around it. And it really hit my identity, right? Because, you know, I saw myself as a doer and get done. And no, that's not what's important. What's important is building consensus and developing trust and building. It was a real seminal moment for me. I had to kind of retool myself. I had to kind of rethink who I was going to be as a leader if I wanted to be successful at it. And it was great. It was great for me, really great. We did complete the implementation. We did get the program. Successfully, you know, it was a successful change in schedule, master schedule, implementation of career pathway outcomes for kids. I haven't paid attention to whether it's still sustained there or not. It was in the mid-odds. I left there in two thousand and four, but I know they still remember my name there because I run in the U C there. We spent a lot of time together up in the larger cities, the superintendents. So something must be still going with that. But I had to, I had to, I had to check myself, and it did help me become a better leader. At the time, it hurt. It was because it like hit my identity, but it was the best thing that we ever did.
Great, thank you. Knowing what you know and the expectancy of us, how would you evaluate our current climate and culture in Forest Hills? And how does the superintendent help to improve the climate or culture of a district?
What I know about the culture and climate of Forest Hills now?
Yeah.
Well, I can only conjecture because I haven't done any kind of surveying. I haven't surveyed people and said, hey, tell me about the climate and culture. Other than it's collegial and people feel good about the district. Obviously, there is, you know, there are concerns about finances. There's a potential budget deficit, you know, budget deficit, declining enrollment. You know, my, my, my talk, my conversation with principals in the district that I've talked to, that, you know, there's some areas in high schools that we need to do some culture issues around, leadership. There might be principals, that kind of thing, so there's opportunity. But this is still a district that is perceived to be very strong, high achievement, great place to be, you know, that kind of thing. But the first, so when I came into Water Valley, this, float with me here in a second. I brought HumanX in. HumanX is the HR wing of Stryker. They used to be anyways. They're an independent company now. Stryker, the med, you know, the med, medical supply company. HumanX is a, was the HR wing, now they're an independent company, new culture and climate surveys for organizations of all over the world. I had them come in and do a culture survey. The survey was off the charts. Like, this is the greatest place in the entire world you'd ever want to be. Wonderful, beautiful, everybody's happy, sunshine and rainbows and unicorns flying over, you know, beautiful stuff. Then they come in and they did the, you know, the level, you know, the building level analysis, the talk to the teachers. And they came back and gave me the report. This is wrong. This is not. These two things do not align. And that's where we began. Don't have a, and I'm going to, that's the professional culture side of it. If there's a discrepancy between what people say it is and perceive it is, and what it actually is when you do the ground-level analysis, the first time you bring in change, you're going to have a crisis. You're going to have a crisis. And so we've had to work and massage that throughout my tenure there in Water Valley in order to realign those things. That's the professional culture. But when I talk about culture and climate with my teachers, I'm talking about the soil we plant our kids in. What's that like for kids? What is the culture and climate in your school? Is it a place where they feel physically, emotionally, mentally sick? Is it a place where we manage difficulties in a structured and systematic way? Those are two separate things, and it's very easy for teachers to confuse them. So when we started our strategic planning implementation, strategic planning implementation, one of our pillars is school culture and climate. My teachers thought we were talking about, are they happy as teachers? We're talking about, do our kids have a good learning environment where they can grow? You have to shift that focus. So I don't know this culture and climate around, you know, kids. And I haven't surveyed to get the data on how it is with professionals. So I'm just basically picking up what I can along the way. But if the question is, how do you get it there? You run your surveys. You poll communicate. And, you know, we would, they need to bring in an outside firm. I'm not just going to throw out a Google, you know, Google survey and say, hey, what do you think? You know, we got to bring in some people that know how to parse this and really get to the psychology behind, in order to evaluate that topic.
Like Mary, I was really thinking about what you were saying there, and then I realized it's my turn. Would you please explain to us what your plan would be to implement a strategic plan?
I'm all about strategic plans. I've been doing strategic plans as an administrator since nineteen ninety-two. So when I started in Richmond, we began a strategic planning initiative, which was great early on in my career because I had to dive into the whole process. And my background prior to education had been in system design and ISO nine thousand and wall bridge. And so I had all this background in strategic planning. I didn't even know it was strategic planning and brought that to the table. So this has been a big part of my career. Obviously, everything that I did in Kalamazoo was around strategic planning. And we developed strategic planning, my friend Bronson, and SchoolCraft. I was one of the two architects of the strategic planning SchoolCraft. We began the day I walked in the door in Water Valley, the starting brand of strategic planning. Dr. Rice, when he, working with him in Kalamazoo and looking at strategic planning on a massive scale like that for twenty-seven school districts with tremendous diversity, was one of the most incredible experiences I've ever had. Because not only did it reinforce the things I knew about strategic planning and believed in, but we were able to pull that whole process together and come up with very easily communicable outcomes and processes for teachers and for students and for parents and for the community. Really was great. So I understand that the district has begun a strategic planning process and the previous superintendent didn't really get off the ground, would want to evaluate what that looks like. Currently, where did he get to? Because all strategic planning should start with what's our mission, what's our vision, what are our values, and what are our beliefs? I can go into whatever detail you want to on that, around those four things. What's our mission, what's our vision, what's our, what's our beliefs, and what are our values? And we have to establish those before we start any kind of process planning. So where are we at in this? How valuable is it? Do we need to start all over again? Can we, you know, riff off of what he's, the work he's already done? I would love to dive into that. Once you have a vision and you know the why, the what, you know, is a whole lot easier. And otherwise, you really are just winging it. You really are. You can bring in great professionals, they can wing it really well, you know? I'm sure there are tons of outstanding teachers, administrators in this district that do a great job at what they do. Man, imagine what they could do if we gave them a focused plan and a direction and support. We could then align our resources and support around that plan to really boost up opportunity, develop systems around those plans, so that people know where to go to get information about it and what their next steps ought to be. And that's where the strategic plan does work. So I'm passionate about that, if you didn't notice.
Question is good. I have a lengthy question, Red Heart. Superintendents are often faced with the challenge of making decisions when there is no clear right answer and members of the community are split on the right path forward. Talk about a time, please, when you were faced with a difficult decision where you knew there would be a group of people unhappy with your decision, no matter what you chose to do. How did you go about making that decision and getting people on board with the direction you determined that was best?
So back to the why, right? What's your vision? What are your beliefs? When you look in the mirror in the morning and you live with yourself in the decision, right? I would say the most passionate one, the most poignant one, I'm saying through, the most poignant one was around the whole COVID nightmare. But we made the decision, and I pushed for it with my board and my teachers, to maintain in-school learning the highest degree possible for our kids during that. We absolutely followed the rules. We absolutely paid attention to protocols. But at the heart of that was, if there are essential employees anywhere in this world, it's in public schools. If we're not essential employees and this work we do is not essential to the development and the support of our country, what are we doing? Right? This is what we're about, and so we kept our kids in school. Risk, controversy, pain. But I believe that our kids, I believe that our kids' best chance at coming out of this crisis, the best they could, is to be with us in school. I had to convince a very skeptical union about that. I had a constituency in the community that was absolutely adamantly opposed to that. We had to create systems in our school that accommodated people's needs. We ran an in-person, what we called remote, and a virtual. We had three different teaching models we were running in this little, you know, seventy-five teacher district. Where they were in class, I mean, you know, like they normally were, or they met with their teacher, the teacher, they kept that same schedule as if they were there, but they met with their teacher virtually and did all their work remotely. Or they picked a full virtual model. We ran all three of them, K-12s. We were doing virtual education, like first graders too. But that's because we had to create systems that met the needs of our community where they were. I didn't know what was going to happen. I didn't know if it was going to be good, bad, or, God help us if some kid dies from COVID or some teacher, you know? It was hard. It was really hard, but you got to go with what you believe is most important. Now, we'll say that we absolutely survived that, and I believe thrived on that. Two of our three schools that were eligible for US News and World Report's badge honors received them this year. We had our highest, we had the best performance against the M-step since two thousand and fourteen. We, you know, we, our accountability measures, the highest they've been in, twenty-one accountability measures, eighteen of them, were the highest they've ever been. they've ever been in the district history. But I think that decision was critical in making that happen. Because if we'd have sent our kids home, in Kalamazoo, some kids home for two years. If we'd have done that, where would they be? I mean, our kids wouldn't have made it. Our working class kids, they wouldn't have made it. They really wouldn't have eaten them up. It's bad enough as it is. You know, I haven't gone through that. But I think we saved kids. I do, and we saved kids and gave them a chance because of that. So, it was hard.
There was similar story. It was hard, you know, it was tough, you know, so. Good, thank you. What is the biggest risk you have taken to do what is right for children?
I think that unbalanced trimester. There was a lot of, it was very creative and innovative and unconventional and unorthodox. That was real risky. In fact, when I put that in the mountains, Superintendent Bob Walter, God love him, forty-eight-year veteran in public education, I told him, this is what I want to do. I mean, you know if you're going to support me. I got the staff behind me. We want to do it. Can you support me? He said, it's your career. You know, to you, if you're really that good about it, whatever. It doesn't work though, you know. I think that was pretty risky. Well, I mean, obviously the COVID thing that we just talked about, that was a huge risk, right? I mean, beyond that, you know, I did, I would say that, you know, take, innovation brings risk. Innovation creates space for risk. But innovation also creates opportunity. And I think knowing that that was what was right, believing that that was what was right for kids, getting my staffs to believe that was what was right for kids, that goes a long way to help me have successful implementation. And successful implementation means good outcomes.
This is the question I like best out of all of them personally. If you had to dream big, what would secondary education look like? And what are the major obstacles to achieving this?
You like this question best.
I like this one best.
I like this question best. This is my wheelhouse. I mean, this is where my strengths are best. So, in the mid-nineties, you may, in the School to Work Opportunities Grant was a federal grant program, was providing money to states to do, you know, to create different pathways to success for kids. A new, a new vision for secondary ed. It really was born way back in the seventies in the K-14 models and some of the things that were being talked about, if they hadn't been in the community colleges, go back far enough. But for me, that really was a, you know, sort of seminal philosophical belief period for me, where I learned about developing career pathways, learned about opening up post-secondary options for kids, earned about, learned about creating individualized, competency-based programming for kids that let them flow as their abilities and interests could guide them. So, in an ideal secondary education system, we would, obviously, an ideal secondary education requires an ideal elementary system that prepares kids for this time when they get into late middle school years, eighth grade, where they are beginning out, to start thinking about where do I want to go with my life as an adult? And we begin to create personalized learning options for them that allow them to get into those pathways. And I'm, you can do this in small, you can do this in big, you can do this anywhere, because it's about the individual kid. And far too often, secondary schools in this country shove kids into, we didn't do ourselves any favor when we put the American curriculum in, even though it did absolutely elevate rigor and expectations. But we also boxed kids into a certain course, into a certain type of coursework. Now, smart schools take advantage of things like personal curriculum and curriculum modification, you know, the curriculum modification options that are in the American curriculum that have evolved since the two thousand ten implementation of that. But driving those individualized opportunities for kids and giving them the support and the training on how to access those, whether it requires them to get into, you know, a CTE-type program, whether it requires them to enroll or, you know, do middle college or, you know, some kind of internship, we got to open the door to kids and we got to do it a whole lot earlier. Just talk about Bering County, because I think that's important in Bering County. You know, we graduate about twelve hundred kids a year in secondary ed in the county. Of those twelve hundred kids, five hundred of them go to post-secondary, enroll in post-secondary education. That's seven hundred kids that don't. Of those five hundred that enroll in post-secondary education, two hundred and fifty of them are back, don't start their second year. Because now you have nine hundred and fifty kids. What are they doing? When we brought the American curriculum in, there was a ton of contraction in the state. The philosophy was, if we just focus on this narrow thing about getting kids prepared for, you know, college, that's what we can do. Well, I'm going to tell you, that's leaving behind seventy-five percent of the kids. Period. We can't do that. Ideal post-secondary, ideal secondary education system isn't, it is eight, fourteen, or beyond. And it is really about getting kids to understand what they need to do to get to their dreams. And if their dreams change, how do you make the jump to another dream? But you're always in a dream. You're always chasing a dream. And we create our counseling systems in a way to make that real for kids. Every kid. And you do that for every kid.
Yeah, thank you. How do you ensure that people know and understand that you have heard them? You touched a little bit on this, but...
Yeah. Again, you know, I'm going to go back to some of my formal training, cognitive coaching, you, you know, you paraphrase, you ask questions, you listen deeply and gently. But you've got to go back. You've got to communicate back. This is what I heard. No, not exactly. Oh, I didn't understand. You've got to have a two-way flow. And you've got to process what people say without what your answer is going to be. Even though this is a terrible example of that, because you're asking for, calling a response. But if you and I were having a conversation and you were talking about a topic about education, you wanted, you know, to understand, or you wanted me to understand your vision, I would listen carefully. I would paraphrase what you say and say, did I understand that right? Or, well, what about this? Or how do you feel about that? I would ask you a question to clarify. So, that people feel like, this is actually a psychological, psychiatry sort of thing to this about, people like hearing their words back to them. It makes them feel like they're understood. It makes them feel like they've made a connection, a personal connection. So, I think that's really important. So, that's, on the interpersonal communication side, that's how I would go about doing that. But superintendent is responsible more for the just one-on-one or small group, you know, interpersonal communication, responsible for system-wide communication as well. And that's where you go back to that three P model, where you have a plan for how do you get feedback, how do you get information, how do you give it back to people in a way that shows you understand it? And then how do you come back and say, okay, now this is what we're going to do as a result of that.
All right. What would you say are key elements that you need to establish and to maintain a good working relationship between you and all of us?
It's all about trust, right? So, you know, you would, you would hear from me regularly. You know, all right, let me back up a little bit. It's all about trust. You trust that I can do the job and you let me do it. And I trust that you know what I'm doing. And if you don't know, you ask. And we can establish that kind of relationship where you trust me to do the job and I trust you that I have my back on it and that if you don't, if you're not sure, you ask, rather than react. I think we have a great, we'll have a great relationship. My responsibility is to communicate forward to you. Rob Olson was a superintendent for Spirit Sturgis for a long time, and he told me one time, you know, thirty percent of your communication, thirty percent of your management is of yourself. Forty percent of your management is of your underlings, of the people that you manage. Thirty percent of your manage, of your time is managing up. And I've, I'm going to remember that for the rest of my life, right? So, you want to, you need me to manage up. And that is to let you know what's going on, when and why, so that you don't get surprised. But the last thing boards want are surprises. And that doesn't mean some constituent out there is not going to say, I'm going right to the top, right? And they do that all the time. Here's where trust comes into play. I need you to say, have you talked to the principal? Have you talked to, have you talked to the teacher? Have you talked to the principal? Have you talked to the superintendent? I can't really do anything about that. We deal with policy. We deal with, you know, the budget. We deal with, you know, the big issues. Management, we're talking management problems. You know, if you do that, I will let you know what things are that are coming. And then I trust that you will push back to me the things that I have to manage and not try to manage from your perspective. If we have that relationship and that works, I think we're going to get along this one way. My job is to keep the wolves off your door, right? That's my job, to keep the wolves, to keep the wolves away from your door. Your job is to give me the opportunity to do that and not try to do that for me.
Thank you. This is now the easy part, because the official grilling is over.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. Do you have any questions for us?
What would you say are your two biggest challenges?
I think, I think you hit them. I think the budget deficit or where we sit right now and how we grow out of this, with how much we offer and how wide our district is, is a challenge that we're meeting, you know, regularly now. And then I think equity across, especially our secondary buildings. And again, I think we do a good job of figuring this out right now. I've been starting to do this, but how does every kid have every opportunity? Does that mean we can continue to support every opportunity or not? I think those are continuing to be on our doorstep right now, yeah.
To sort of piggyback on that, I would say that it's not, it's the culture of the different buildings we have. It's not so evident necessarily at the elementary level, where everything sort of flows a little bit more easily. But when you're looking at the high school level and the different opportunities that are offered at the different high schools and how that affects the kids that are in those high schools and whether they want to move to another one or take some classes here or there, or can you, can you, how does that all work? I think that's a really big challenge for us right now to try to, to try to work through.
And I think another thing is we have a relatively young board that came together in a pandemic, and we're still trying to learn the ropes. And one of our biggest challenges and everybody in this room would admit it, is communication. We sought out advice and were advised to have a free person communication department at a point that we had a person coming in part-time. But, you know, with staffing issues and the pandemic and whatnot, that's been taking some time. And so, that would be a big priority. But, you know, with the pandemic and all things, like I said, we had a similar story to you, and the trust was damaged. And it was not anybody's fault. It was just the way of the world. So, all those things are tied together to come in. We love the idea that it would keep the wolves off of our doorstep. But it's a bigger challenge than one might think. It's not, right? So, that whole idea of teaching and learning and communicating and making sure we restore the trust, so we got no wolves. That would be a challenge.
And I know that you're asking specifically about the issues here in our district, but another, another issue I see is the retention of talented, experienced teachers and the recruiting of new ones. So, I know that's on your, that's on your radar, but I would say that's a definition.
I would say all staff. All staff. Thank you. Well, you know my bias. I do.
What do you think your administrators would say are your two biggest challenges?
Time. We pride ourselves on the fact that of five hundred and fifty-some public school districts, at one point, we were seventh from the bottom as far as the money we allocated towards non-classroom expenses. And we prided ourselves in that. And now we realize that might need some attention. And we have not enough people doing way too much work. And we, in that strategic planning process, we came up with a cool phrase, I hope I can come up with it, strategic abandonment. Because you think of all the initiatives the states throwing at people's, in people's directions, and there's always more to do and never enough time. So, that idea of getting back to basics and how do we educate kids and do what's best for them and keep our people happy and able to do their jobs.
Well, I'm thinking specifically of what administrators have mentioned to me. And it's just simply about the modes of communication. And that's maybe the most consistent thing I've heard.
That's all the questions I have for you.
Okay. Well, at this point then, if you would like to offer a closing statement, you may.
Yeah, I'll keep it really simple and brief. I just, first of all, thank you kindly for the opportunity to come and share my experiences, my knowledge, my, you know, just a short little summary of what I do with you and give you the opportunity to, to tell you why I would like to be the new superintendent for this little public school. I believe that, you know, I hope you feel my passion. You can see my resume, my experience, and the things that I told you today. I hope that they resonate with you, because I do believe that I have the skill base. I have the background, the knowledge, and the drive to help move the district forward. Obviously, it's in a different place in a lot of ways. But there's always, I don't care where you're at, there's always stuff just underneath the veneer that need to be fixed in order to go to that next level. And that, that system approach to things, that strategic development of plans, and that deep commitment to communication, it's been some of my, you know, my background in education. Moreover, you talk about personnel and administrators. I'm very, very good at developing administrators. And, you know, especially secondary administrators, but I've been an elementary principal and I understand, yeah, I understand literacy at a very deep level. I understand elementary education at a very deep level and am very capable of developing your administrative team as it moves forward. And I do know that you've had some administrative change and there's more coming. So, it's, it's going to be really incumbent on the board to have somebody in that has a lot of experience developing administrators, which I have in my roles as a superintendent, as a district school improvement specialist, as a developer administrator in Kalamazoo. I, you know, I've had a long, rich experience doing that, so I know that I can do that well for you. And the strategic planning piece, a lot of, a lot of experience in that. I know that that, and these are the times when you need a strategic plan. When you've got challenges, big challenges, like fiscal challenges, personnel challenges, what are you going to, you know, what are you going to strategically abandon? What are the most essential things? This is what a strategic plan is for. I've got a lot of experience in that, a lot of different contexts, small and big. And I know that I can bring that to bear for this, this school district. So, I hope I communicated that well for you. And please don't hesitate to reach out, you know, to me through Dave, if you have any other questions. I'll be glad to share anything. Send an email back to answer and communicate. And we're not supposed to communicate directly, so we'll go through Dave. But let me know if there's anything that you, as you ponder, you have some questions to ask.
All right. Thank you very much. We really appreciate your interest in the position and taking time out of your busy schedule to come and spend some time with us. So, thank you very much.
It's a little closet over here.
Is that just, are they recording?
Yeah, it's still recording. We're still recording. It's open session. They're in there right now. Kelly, can you door shut?
It's really, like, it's, it's hard place to, to get things. So as soon as they sit down, it will be like right then and there.
Too nice in a row. Hi. I know, I know.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Did you get your chocolate today?
No.
The cookie's back there, just.
I already told you.
You've had it yesterday, but now you have another day.
I didn't have it yesterday.
You said you had it earlier yesterday?
No, I said I can't have it.
Oh, I thought you already had your chocolate.
No.
You couldn't have some more.
No.
I said go ahead, split up.
No, I can't have it until Easter.
Zoe, and your chocolate.
You're going to love me in about another week.
I would say I appreciate your kindness.
Oh, of course. Do you want it?
No.
Are you sure?
No.
I have it, it's in the car.
You're a very kindly person, but I don't want you to appear partisan for any reason. You're part of the school district.
Oh, no, no, no.
I'm mildly, I'm mildly radioactive in this community. So I appreciate your kindness. You're a very good human being, but it's okay.
I just don't want you to.
I'll be fine. I'll be fine. Any endeavor. Oh, no, I know, I know. Any endeavor that is worth it involves some type of person. And that's fine. But I also, like I said, I don't want you to appear partisan in any way, shape or form. And like I said, in this community, I'm mildly radioactive. So I completely get it and I appreciate you for that. But again, I want your reputation to be accepted. Appreciate that, so. No, I know. That's a very courageous stance to take. And I can respect that. Protect your reputation. But thank you. I appreciate you all.
Of course, anytime, truly. Thank you, thank you.
Long time no see.
Thanks.
Looking nice.
Thanks.
You're welcome. How's it going, man?
All right, folks, if you can find a seat, well, get ready for the next candidate. If they don't mind, please. And if you do mind, the heck with it. We're going on anyway.
Hello, hi, Mary.
Best thing I brought. After yesterday. Vintage. So I keep it in the spirit of things. I brought, sure, I brought two.
Okay, thank you.
I've got one in the car.
I know, I had them in the car. That's why I brought them.
How else is this built character?
I know, but you look what you're strapped to. Looks like you're strapped in. This one's safe.
All right, everyone, I would like to introduce Dr. Jennifer Fee to you. She comes to us from the superintendent's position in St. Joseph's.
All right, welcome. On behalf of Forest Hills Board of Education, we'd like to welcome you here tonight. And I'll take a second to let you know what the format's going to be. The question portion here will last approximately 75 minutes. Toward the end, you'll be able to ask us questions if you have any. And if you would like to make a closing statement, we do so at that time as well. So choosing our next superintendent is a responsibility of critical importance to our board. We know that being the superintendent of a K through 12 public school is an enormous and a unique job. We need to find the right person for the next moment and for the future to lead our district. We're, we are ready and excited to learn as much about you as we can during this interview process. And I want to once again thank all of the staff, community that have helped, provide input to us as we go through this whole process. So with that, the board obviously has had a chance to review your application materials, but the audience members have not. So could you please briefly review your background and share what causes you to be interested in this position at this point in your career?
Sure, thank you. Thanks for having me this evening. I do appreciate being allowed to share my experiences and background with you and looking forward to exploring how I might fit with Forest Hills. So I'll start out with a little bit about my career, then I'll move into why I'm interested in the position. So after a short stint working in marketing and advertising, my career in education really began in Florida and Colorado, where I taught middle school at private independent schools. And then my husband Michael and I, we decided to move back to Michigan closer to our families just before the birth of our first child, Mackenzie. And she is now a social worker in CL Public Schools. So we moved back and I stepped away from the classroom after 10 years of teaching to begin my administrative career at East Burn Rapids High School as the assistant principal. And I stayed in that role for two years and then had the privilege to move into the high school principalship and remained in that role for the next 10 years. And about 2017, the superintendent brought me into district level leadership as the assistant superintendent, where I was overseeing curriculum, instruction, assessment, technology and the preschool child leader program. And I remained in that position for four years until joining St. Joseph Public Schools for the next, since it's my third year there, as their superintendent. And in that job, I've had the pleasure to create and implement a shared vision for that district and the honor to work with a very high-functioning board and really strong leadership team. I'm very proud of all that we've been able to accomplish in our time together. We've built a comprehensive five-year leadership plan since I've been there. We've completed a $12 million HVAC project. And we have laid the foundation for a $98 million bond proposal for this May. We've settled a lot of collective bargaining agreements and we've implemented some high dosage, small group tutoring with our own teachers and been able to provide some really robust professional development to our staff. So my time there has really solidified my skill set to be able to take on bigger challenges in the district like Forest Hills. And I've come to appreciate the value of that trusted team that I work with. They're very important. And the value of strong communication and collaboration with them. And I think in the superintendency, we really gain appreciation for the power of that systems approach to managing the district. And I'm, I feel very prepared to be able to apply that approach in a larger, more exciting way for us. In all honesty, prior to superintendent Dean's retirement, I have no intention of leaving my superintendency. Frankly, there's nothing pushing me away. I'm happy in my role. And I work with a really strong board, the community, and we are partners in leading the district forward. Yet I did step back when Forest Hills became available and truly reflected on this possibility. And I quickly realized it was one I didn't want to pass up. It would be a chance to team up with a group of educators to lead what is considered a premier district. And Forest Hills has a mission and a value and principles that are a natural fit with my own. And the sheer size of Forest Hills is exciting. It's an opportunity to really impact a larger community and more staff and students than I might be able to impact in a smaller setting. So I choose to be a superintendent because I love working with kids. I love the energy of a school building filled with students. And I also get the opportunity to work with and support and build the capacity of educators who work with students every day. And that's an exciting piece as well. I truly believe those who work with the students on a day-to-day basis can impact them individually. And that's really hard work. It's necessary. And I commend those who do it. What really fulfills me as, and what I get to do as a superintendent is impact large groups of students from a systems organizational standpoint. When you put systems in place and you remove barriers for students and teachers, you are able to impact students for the long term, day after day. Even when I'm gone, they'll still be impacted by a system, if it's a good robust system. And so that piece of, of the superintendency, that large scale, long-term impact is what's exciting and rewarding and why I want to continue to do this job. Why I want to continue to do it in a larger setting from that end. I'm also seeking a superintendency here because the time and location are right for me personally. Since relocating from Grand Rapids to St. Joseph, I've unexpectedly lost two family members, which has been challenging to be far away. And a position in my hometown, near family would allow me to continue to pursue my career as a superintendent and make that income, but be available to support my family in time of need. I have two sons who would be absolutely thrilled if their parents came back to their hometown so that they can see their childhood friends when they're on break from yoga. We get that complaint a lot, that they can't do that. And when I told my oldest son about this opportunity in here this evening, he said to me, "Let's go, let's do this." As if he's like sitting right here, like with me. No, he's not. Nevertheless, I really appreciated his encouragement and the support of my whole family in this endeavor. And so it is partly the location, near family in my hometown, but coupled with that chance to really lead a district with a natural fit, my values, and to impact a larger community and to really have the opportunity to collaborate with educators and a very engaged community in the school district that's compelled me to be here. And I did feel drawn to the position. It's the only superintendency I'm upon. If I don't receive this honor, then I will go back happily to St. Joseph and contribute and carry out the vision that we've created together there. But I believe that you are looking for a strong leader who can really honor the great work of this district. You have the necessary resources, you have stellar, incredible programming and a deep history of excellence. But at the same time, you need someone that can pull the community together, the board together, the staff and students together and really elevate the district to the next level. I feel like I'm that superintendent. I know if I was your superintendent, I would keep students in the forefront. I would make student, make decisions based on what's best for kids and prioritize that community engagement, pull together the leadership team to really deliver the best experience to the students as possible. I look forward to sharing more about how I can do that and how it can serve you. And I appreciate the time you've given me. Hope they haven't taken too much. And I'm ready for the questions. Thank you.
Me, I'm sorry. I can't hear very well because I think the guy before her was taller. Can we just lower the mic? Yeah, thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Well, yeah, thanks.
Say something to make sure we can hear you.
Sure. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mary. That was just what I wanted to say. Okay. But actually, I do have something else to say. So given your research and what you know of this district, what do you believe are the two to three most critical long-term priorities that we will need to address? How would your background and skills help us to address those priorities? So the, the first priority that probably isn't unique to Forest Hills, but is always the number one priority of district is safety of staff and students. And so that's always going to be a priority. And I can't think of a time in my life as an educational leader and administrator where I haven't been sitting in an auditorium wondering, "Where's the tribulator? Where's the microphone in case the fire line blows off? I need to make sure that that's in place." It's just always on our minds as an administrator. And, but you can't, you can't just react. You have to be proactive with safety and security. So at St. Joseph, we've really worked to tighten up our emergency operations plan, collaborate with public safety in all the cities and townships to ensure that, make sure we have evacuation sites. We've got re-securied grants to have door barricades placed in the rooms and bleed kits and did training. And so that's a priority we're always going to be allocating dollars and resources and time and effort as well. But in terms of Forest Hills and their critical, your critical priorities and through my research, I would say number one is to really dig deep and understand the trend of declining enrollment over the last 10 years. There's been pieces and parts each year. COVID definitely hit Forest Hills hard and didn't get the bump back in recovery. So, you know, almost 1,000 students has a significant impact on the budget. Yeah, I see that opportunity with enrollment that as a more opportunity because if we can really dig deep and get down to the data and the granularity of what's happening, it's easy to say it's because of birth rates, but there could be more behind them. Forest Hills is so large, you really have to understand the trends, the dynamics on a smaller scale and then look larger. And what's pulling kids away? What, is there something pushing kids away? Is it the birth rate? Is it the housing market? And once we know that root cause, we can understand how we want to approach that. And my experiences at East Burn Rapids and St. Joseph have dealt with enrollment issues. We implemented a tuition enrollment program. We implemented a tuition enrollment program at East Grand Rapids that brought some students in and helped us in a very landlocked enrollment community. When our childcare preschool program was losing numbers, we made some significant marketing and advertising and digital social media ads to bring more students in that way. And School of Choice is something that I worked very closely with at St. Joseph and at East Grand Rapids and really digging dive and making sure we're intentional and deliberate in School of Choice and we're understanding where our numbers and what, not just looking at year one, but what would that look like in five years and 10 years down the road when we have students come in at the lower levels. So be very intentional with that. So my experience and background there would be very helpful with that priority. And the last priority is probably tied to the, a growth a little bit, but we want to make sure that we're operating with a structured, balanced budget, that our expenses are aligned and our revenue. And certainly, the declining enrollment can impact that ability as well as the COVID dollars that were so abundant. And we put in such wonderful programs that students needed, but they're one-time funds and the top, top time is taken on September 2024 when those are done. And so we have to look at how we can sustain those programs and be very sensitive to that. So skills overall, I believe, is, I'm a solution-oriented person, a problem solver. Maybe to a fault, I'm always trying to fix things and some things you can't fix. But that would be a skill that I think I would bring that mindset. I think I'm a collaborative leader and those are problems you can't solve alone. They take a team and they take a leadership team and individuals to provide input and to implement any changes that you do as a result of that. So those would be the two skills that I would bring forward. And in terms of tough financial times, definitely lived through the dark ages of school funding in 2000s at East Grand Rapids and had to cut a significant percentage of the budget over a period of time. And so I'm prepared and ready to have to make those difficult decisions in a constructive manner.
Thank you. Effective and timely communication is vital to the success of a school district. Please describe the type of communication students, staff, and parents should expect to receive from you.
I think communication is crucial in a school district because it's the foundation of positive relations between the district and the rest of the community and all the different stakeholders. And it is the crux of whether the public has confidence in the district or not, and trust the district and gives credibility to the district. So it's not something that we can just do on the side. We have to be very deliberate and intentional with communications. And I see communications in two ways. One is what's the information we're giving out and what communication coming in and how we handle that. So thinking about communication going out, my number-one priority is to be transparent in communication, which to me means being timely, honest, to the point, presenting facts, having an action plan, and basically delivering communication where people aren't left with questions any longer, or they know where to find the answers to questions. And that creates a trust and credibility with the audience. And then I think we need to have multiple methodologies in our communication. We have to remove barriers for people and meet people where they're at in terms of communication. So we can't always be sending an email or using the school messenger to send text messages or phone calls. We have to be more diverse than that. But the danger in diversity is losing the message, the consistency of message. So you have to balance those two things out. But I foresee ways that I communicate in my current position as a superintendent are, of course, your quarterly newsletters, but also being sure that we're sending out newsletters at the building level, the classroom level, there's consistency along those as well in that manner. And communication is beyond just paper or tangible, but it's meetings, it's conversations, it's events where you're talking to people and doing those pieces. So that's a piece of the communication as well. And the public confidence comes from telling our story. And that's, when you're in a school building and you're in a school district and you operate, some wonderful things happen every day that are amazing. But when you're not here on a day-to-day basis and you may not have students in the district, you don't know what's happening here and how amazing the staff are and the students and what occurs. And so finding ways to tell your story, whether that be through frequent press releases, working through the Penn ISD School News Network. Social media is a big piece and we coordinate that at our district by assigning days of the week that different buildings have to submit social media achievements and accomplishments so that we're getting something out there every, every day of the week in that regard. The other side of communication is how we receive communication. And that really begins with creating space for people to communicate with us. And that can be through being visible and present and approachable at events and communities, and not just me, but other leaders in the district, so that they can receive that communication and hear it and understand it. It could be inviting people in and engaging them in advisory groups or focus groups or meetings or committees from that standpoint. And that way, they can share their concerns and ideas from that standpoint as well. And then I think we have to be responsive to that communication, something that is actually an entire component of the strategic plan that I operate under at St. Joseph. And a big piece is at least acknowledging emails within $24 to $48. And that's been a big push in our district, just that customer service, client service orientation. People feel heard when you acknowledge them, the timing, and that. You don't have to have the answer, you just have to let them know that you received it and you're taking action and you'll follow that up. So that's been an important priority as well in terms of communication. So you'll see it from all points. The best example I can see, bringing it back to students, parents, and staff, is a situation that's best illustrated through an example. And I would say right after the Oxford event, a couple days later, there was a threat made on the bathroom wall of a high school that said that the school was going to be shot up at a certain time. And of course, that created extreme anxiety. So I nearly went over to the high school principal's office and walked beside him while he did that work and executed that with his team. But we wanted to make sure our communication was really spot on there. So we collaborated on communication that, that we sent to staff that they could talk to their students about, talking points for our staff. So our students were communicated with, we had very concise, clear communication that went out to our families, that was timely and answered questions and committed to further updates when more was known and talked about what they could do as well. We made sure that the rest of the district team knew what was happening in the district so there was no surprises coming out there. Of course, the board was communicating with immediately, kept up to date through those communications. And then after we got through the crisis moment and we had to integrate students to school, there was obviously some reluctance there. So we took time to meet with student groups, the student leadership, and understand what the feel was and how students were feeling. They really helped us to design a way to do a slow integration back into the ability so students felt safe. And we got the teachers to do the same. So that example really captures many different ways that you can communicate with your staff and students and parents.
Thank you.
Can the audience still be muted or problem?
Yeah, is that okay? Do we have enough volume in the back, a little bit? Do you want to turn it up maybe a touch and see?
I can sit closer to you. I hear a pop.
I know, yeah, sorry.
It doesn't bite though. It doesn't bite? I'm not afraid of a little bite.
Okay, next. What do you think are the unique challenges of leading a district with three high schools or three attendance areas as we have? And how would you address some of those challenges?
I think the challenge is the fact that you have three unique high schools that have very independent areas, unique features, traditions, their own mascots, their own programming, yet they're part of this comprehensive system. When, when I ask someone where they went to high school, the first thing they say is Forest Hills. The second thing they say is central, northern, and eastern. So we're all Forest Hills. And so even though we have these independent, unique buildings that serve our students and that population, we have to remember we're all part of one. We need to find areas where it makes sense to have consistency in collaboration. And usually that's around the areas of standards, curriculums, so that every student that graduates from Forest Hills has an equitable experience, a similar experience, and comes out with the same outcomes from that standpoint. And I really think of it as no different than when I was at St. Joseph or East Grand Rapids in particular. I remember that there's three elementary schools in East Grand Rapids. And early on in that tenure, school A, B, and C were very different. If a student went to school A, they got some great technologies and some fantastic STEM program programming. But if you went to school B, you learned about butterflies and had a field trip to the planetarium. And if you went to the other school, you had a completely different literacy curriculum than you did at the other two schools. And some of those things I mentioned are fine to be different and unique, and they should be. They should each have their own identity. But there's others where we need to have equitable experiences for our students because we're all part of one. So we had to work really hard in East Grand Rapids to bring, create systems and processes where it brought teachers from the different buildings together, principals from the different buildings together, so that they could collaborate on big issues, on big items where there needs to be common ground and consistency, professional development, what standards we're teaching, the curriculum that we're using. It should be different across those three buildings. It should be equitable. So the balance and the challenge is finding that where you have to be consistent, but retaining that uniqueness and specialness and traditions that each of the different school areas offers here.
Thank you for that. Please give us an example of a successful education initiative or program you have initiated in your career and what were the results?
The largest implementation that I've had to do in my career was implementing the International Bachelor's Diploma Program at East Grand Rapids High School. That was a significant challenge, one, an opportunity, I should say. One, because it was an endeavor that we had to determine if it was a viable option for us. And if it was, it was going to be a timely communication. It wasn't going to be, two months, we're going to have the IB diploma program. It was going to be a multi-year endeavor to actually bring that to fruition. And the other issue with that programming was, there was, sorry, it's popping in, was that East Grand Rapids Light Forest Hills is a very high-achieving, well-regarded institution that had success in its academics and with its students. And when you, when you want to make a change, people are very reluctant to say, "It's not broken, why are we going to fix it?" Don't move by cheese is what they some say. And so that was a challenge that we had to understand that even though that we have success and we're doing well, there's always room for us to grow and there's always student needs that change and have to be met. And one of the things that changed in the world from the way we were doing before was the globalness of the world and our understanding of different cultures and different perspectives and the skills that we need to navigate the world. And the mission of the district was to teach kids to successfully navigate in a global community. And I don't think the program that we had in place, albeit successful, reached that benchmark. And the IB diploma program was a way to bring that to fruition and improve the experience without taking away from the great success that we had. So that was the challenge of it. What I really wanted to approach in that implementation was knowing that it was going to be a long procedure and it was going to take a lot of pushing to get along, is really start with the end in mind and build a very deliberate and intentional process. And I did that in collaboration with the central office administrators and others in the leadership team and really walk through what that process would look like. And where it started was, I can't implement a program unless I believe in it and understand it. I have to know everything about it because I don't feel like I can lead people to something that I'm not even sure about. So I spent a lot of time just learning about it, understanding it, seeking what the value would be, the pros, the cons. And then once I had that in place, then we were able to sort of do a drip approach and really start exposing the staff and students a little bit and parents a little bit to the concepts of IB and what that might offer to our students. So we took a small group of teachers to a conference on the other side of the state about IB. Then we brought some teachers in to share their experience of IB. We had them read articles about it. So that kind of came over time. And through that work, you start to identify who might be good ambassadors for this project, who might really embrace this and be there to support that implementation and build the program. But you also identify those who are a little reluctant or might not be as embracing. And then you capture all that. So then you bring them and ask them to be part of a more formal exploration process. And so we brought in people who supported it, people who questioned it, people who were, one or two that were adamantly against it. And we joined them with a couple board members, a couple parents, and we really went intense into trainings and learned all about IB really deeply and more formally. And through that process, that group starts to come together and starts to see the value that I saw in it and that the leadership of the district saw in it, and they begin to embrace it and own it. And then all of a sudden, it's not, we shouldn't do this, it's how are we going to do this? And you, all of a sudden, that consensus just goes to the top. And once we got to that point, I could step back and be like, okay, we're going to say we're going to do this, how are we going to communicate that to the community, the students, the parents? And that group was able to come up with a communication plan, the rollout plan, and with support from me and central office. And then once we committed to doing the work, it's a long process and it takes, there's a lot of different parts. So we took those committee members and we took other people who wanted to be part of that and divided them up into committees and we got the work done. And about a year and a half or two years after that, we were able to implement the program. And we had, I think around 25 kids the first year and it's eighth year in the program maybe now. And I think almost 200 students have received the full diploma. And I think probably close to 2,000 students now, if I do the math, who have completed at least one IB course, which exposes them to a different type of curriculum and skillset than the traditional curriculum. And so that was a huge endeavor and one of my most rewarding experiences as an educator because I do believe it was such a valuable program for students and what was right for them at the time.
Thank you. What opportunities do you believe budget limitations present? In tough financial times, what are your top three priorities?
I like how you choose the word opportunity there. It's not a challenge of a budget crisis. So first of all, I think number one in the time of budget limitations is you want to keep the, any cuts that you have to make as far away from the classroom to students as possible. That's a number-one priority. Of course, a priority is always going to be safety. You have to allocate dollars to safety, you can never let up on that. And then I think, I would say that you have to try to raise revenues too. You can't just always be cunning. So you have to be cognizant of ways that you can increase revenue in another way. And that's really difficult at a school district because we're not profit-generating organizations. So that's a limited piece, but it can lessen the cuts that have to be made. And I think what the opportunity is with budget crisis situation is that a budget should reflect the district's priorities and their values and their roadmap, where they want to be. And when we have lots of money, there's lots of ramps on the road that you can go. You can throw money there and throw money there, kind of like COVID. You can, you know, oh, let's do that, let's do that, that'll work, we have money to do that. But when you don't have the money, you really have to tighten that belt and say, "What are the essential priorities?" And when the district has a strategic plan and they're able to identify what those priorities are, the budget, the scope and the decisions that have to be made are much easier. And at East Grand Rapids, being part of that budget cutting over those years when it was really challenging, I think it was really important that it was a collaborative process. We really made decisions based on pulling all the different constituent groups together and understanding, they have great ideas. We don't know how the school works sometimes at the bottom of the level through custodial maintenance, operations, food service. They have ideas that we might not have ever thought about. Also having people at the table who are impacted by cuts in programming or services, understand the impact because they're the ones that implement it. And so they could give insights of, if you cut the And so they could give insights of, "If you cut this, this is what it would look like, or this is what it would do, or if you cut this, we can still give this service. It's just going to be a lot different in how we deliver it." So having a collaborative process where you take input and then you can make really educated decisions around what needs to be cut and what's not. And in raising revenue, you need to first look at enrollment. Is that an option? And then, there's so many grants. And our general fund covers so many things. And if you really go and dig through all those grants, you might find something that your general fund is covering that you can cover with a grant. And now you have general fund dollars. So I don't want to call it a shell game, but it's a shell game. And you can find dollars that way. So really go hard after grants to understand that possibility as well. But those are tough times and not fun times, but there are opportunities to improve and do things better and more efficiently.
Great. Jennifer, my turn. Okay. With respect to a district's planning process, setting direction, how do we, how should you involve stakeholders? Stakeholders being staff members, students, parents, community members?
Throughout my career, even not even my career, even as a student, I've been part of multiple strategic planning processes. So I was a student representative in high school and then as a teacher and administrator, as an assistant superintendent. And then at St. Joseph, designed and led a whole strategic planning process from start to, in our first year of the plan now. And so I've seen a lot of different ways to do it and how to do it. And there's some things that I take away from those experiences. And one is that you need a process that's very clear and articulated. And it should be a process that you can repeat after so many years. So that way, you can measure your outcomes. It's comparable and you can see where it needs to change. That data is comparable and can be the same process. That's really important. I think a strategic planning process needs to be built from the ground up with all the voices on the table. It can't come from the top down. It can't even come from the board, in a sense. The board has to embrace a collective vision that comes from all the different groups, community members, parents, alumni, students, staff. All those pieces, that has to come to be part of the plan. So you have to ensure that it's a collaborative and collective process. And then it needs to be based on data and research and tied together and grounded in that work. So the best way to kind of illustrate how I would seek input and run a strategic planning process is to outline what I did at St. Joseph. And so what I did is I sat with the board. We talked about different processes and procedures that we could go through. And we designed a process and a timeline of which we wanted that accomplished. And then we determined, we communicated out, "We're going to have a strategic plan." We made it very clear and transparent that we were going to go through this initiative that was going to take an entire year to complete, but that it would set the direction in the future. And then we, after communicating that out to all the stakeholders and clearly articulating the process, we began gathering that collective voice. So at St. Joseph, we used focus groups. And we had focus groups of community leaders. We had alumni. We had students. We had staff groups and parents. And we led focus groups for a couple of months, took that data in. Another way I've seen it done is to hold collective conversations in various, in a bigger district, it might be something that one does. Where community members can come or different constituents, and you run a facilitated process to gather input and feedback over some strategic questions. And you can pull that data together. That's another way to gather that information. Once we had the focus group data, we then gathered further data with a survey. And we had different surveys. We surveyed fifth through 12th grade students who completed the survey. We had residents of the community, community leaders, and we had teachers. And then we had staff as well and families, complete different surveys. And we gathered that data. And then we had a higher quantitative data, achievement data, enrollment data, things you can get off myschooldata.org. And we brought that all together. And then we had a strategic plan leadership group and mostly comprised of some board members and the leadership team and a couple of other individuals that came together and really just sifted through that data and organized it and synthesized it and categorized it and came up with themes that bubbled to the top. And then we took those themes and we prioritized them, what are the big priorities? And in the end, we came up with 41 different, we call them intended outcomes. And they're categorized into four categories, teaching and learning, systems of support, communications, and finance operations. And that's our strategic plan and it has set the direction for the district for the next four or five years and has really been a wonderful roadmap for our work that has happened so far. So that's the process that I envision. It was very effective and could see that working well on the district side of the surface.
Hi, thank you. Would you please describe your leadership experience working with diverse constituents? Again, social, cultural, economic diversity. And tell us about how you've worked to develop educational equity and a culture of inclusion for all?
That's a, that's a big question. Okay. What I think of, what I think you're talking about is diversity and equity and inclusion and belonging in that question. And I think back to so many different experiences and trainings that I've had throughout my career as an educator, starting back in the teacher and independent schools and at East Grand Rapids. And I think I was part of one of the earliest Institute of Healing Racism groups as a teacher and continued that work even most recently in Marion County, the organization called Brave Talks that works through Quora Health. And then so many different experiences around restorative practices, trauma-informed practices, safe schools training, human trafficking, they just go on and on. Title IX, anti-discrimination. So all of those created value at the time when I was going to be there. But I think it's the culmination of all those together that has really forged and coalesced into, I guess it's a philosophy or a lens through which I am an educational leader. And so when I think of diversity, I think of how important it is that our students see themselves in others, whatever that may be, that they see role models and can make connections and build relationships with those who look like them. And then I truly believe that when we have diverse perspectives, experiences, backgrounds, that we're richer as a community and we are able to come up with higher-quality, better solutions. We're able to vet those. We have more innovative ideas when there's more voices and perspectives at the tables. That's kind of where I've coalesced around diversity. In terms of equity, for a long time, I kept thinking in that that we're all equal. And I've really come to the understanding that equity is simply making sure that every student has what they need and making sure that we're removing barriers so they can access what they need. And so it's not about equal. It's about access and opportunity and having access to opportunities that everyone else has. And then inclusion, we know that learning cannot happen unless a student feels connected to the school, engaged in the school, has an adult that they connect with. And so inclusion and belonging are imperative to be present in the school because our mission is to educate kids and we can't educate them unless they have that sense at their disposal. So those things have kind of coalesced together. But when I think about leadership experiences around those, the first one that I had that was challenging was in the first few months as the assistant superintendent at East. And a group of parents came very concerned about whether we were addressing diversity within our curriculum at an appropriate amount and level and place. And we could tell them all day long, "Yes, we do. Yes, we do. We do it all the time. It's totally part of our thing. This is all the things we do." And that was not satisfactory at the time. And we were still getting a lot of inquiry and questions. And so we had to engage in, I guess it was a full curriculum audit, where we brought in, we talked with leadership teams at the different buildings, departments, grade-level teams, the building principals. We really gathered information about what was happening on the ground floor in regard to the curriculum and diversity at different grade levels and at the different building levels. And took that information together and developed a presentation that we gave to the board in regard to that. And I think we had to move the board meeting to a big auditorium because it was filled up. And it was a long meeting, but it was a really good meeting and a lot of great questions were asked by the board. And it was an opportunity that we were able to show what we do versus just tell people. And I think that's a nuance in transparency, is telling people, you know, we work for so long, you really have to show and act to be transparent. And so that was helpful there. And in the end, that was a difficult, challenging process at times and was tense at times. But in the end, we developed some good partnerships with those parents and were able to make some improvements to the curriculum and move forward from there. So that's one experience. And then I think about St. Joseph. One of the reasons I was intrigued by St. Joseph was their board had recently passed a very firm and strong resolution about diversity, equity, and inclusion. And that was intriguing to me, that they would make that commitment. And when I came aboard, the strategic plan they had in place was built on a framework called the BELL Framework, which is completely based on creating equitable educational experiences. And so much of the work in my first year and then subsequently in our strategic plan is around creating those equitable experiences and removing barriers. So in the first year, we made sure that every student had a one-to-one device. We made sure they had access to the internet. We created, we revamped the secondary schedules so they had an advisory period each week where connection and community could be built. We also, on the other days of the week, had a period in the day where we could offer intervention and enrichment to give students what they need when they needed it. So those are some efforts that really came through as leadership experiences tied to that philosophy that developed over time, diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Thank you so much. What has been the most unpopular administrative decision you had to make? And how did you handle the reaction to this decision?
I've never been an unpopular decision in my entire life. The second part was what was the reaction?
Yeah, and how did you handle the reaction to this decision?
I'll go with the most, the more recent one, just because there's so many to choose from. But when I first entered St. Joseph, it was in July. And I swear, every day, people would come up to me and say, "You need to put air conditioning in. It needs to be in by the start of school. You have to have air conditioning in your building. It has to be in by the start of school." And I'm like, "How am I going to put air conditioning in your building in two months? Like, that is not possible." And people were amazing. They're like, "We will go home to you from. We will buy window air conditioners. And then we'll come to your building and cut holes in the windows and put them in. And then we'll get the industrial air conditioner with big tubes and we'll put it in the building." And I'm like, "We cannot do this. Like, we cannot have these ad hoc air conditioning things occurring. That is not safe. That is not energy efficient. That is not up to code." And I kept having to say, "No." And after the first couple of "no's," people weren't really happy. They had this expectation that this is the person that's going to come put air conditioning in. I could not deliver in time for them to desire. So what I really did, I got tired of saying "no," but not having a plan in place to say, "No, not now. And this is why. And this is how we're going to do it in the end." And so early on in that fall, when it was really hot, I was very motivated. And I began to do some significant research on how would we fund an air conditioning project that was sustainable, safe, up to code, and usable in an elementary classroom in three buildings and do it within a responsible financial manner? And one of the benefits of St. Joseph was they were below a certain debt mill. And so that allowed them to do something called a non-voted bond, where you did go to the public, but you could do a small amount of money and sell bonds and use that money. So we did a non-voted bond for a small amount. And then with all the COVID dollars, we took general fund dollars that were opened up because of other COVID expenditures and we combined those. And we were able to implement air conditioning in all three buildings. And I was able to say that we had a plan and we're going to start in spring of the second year. And we had air conditioning in the building beginning of this school year by the skin of our teeth on the first day. And so that was unpopular for a while, but now it's really popular, especially with almost 99 days of visiting the school year. So that was good. So unpopular decisions can turn into good ones, but you have to have a plan and a focus in place and convey that to those who are not happy with your first answer.
Great, thank you. What role does the school district play in student mental health and wellbeing? And please describe your experience for us in these areas specifically.
I think back to my time as a high school principal. Every Monday morning, we'd be with the counselors and the administrative team for our student support meeting. And it was inevitable that every week, there was a student who was being challenged by mental health issues or wellness issues and could not come to school on a reliable basis, could not come to school at all. And at that time, which was 2005, 2010, in there, there wasn't, one, there wasn't awareness. Two, it was a stigma. Three, there was no dollars. There was no resources. It was so limited. It was most frustrating time because you knew you had to support these students to get them their education, yet you didn't have the tools and resources to do it. You're just kind of beating your head against the wall. So because student wellness and mental health has to be in place in order for students to learn, the district absolutely has a role in student well-being and mental health. And COVID, for all the bad things that happened during that time and trauma, brought light to mental health. And it brought awareness. It reduced the stigma. And it provided resources and tools for us to be able to better address mental health. Are we there? Absolutely not. But we're in such a better place than we were 10, 15 years ago when we got to this. And so I've been able to, at St. Joseph, make sure that we have social workers in every building, counselors, added counselors. We created that advisory structure I talked about and intervention period that I talked about to ensure that we can monitor student wellbeing. We can teach social, emotional skills. I think part of mental health and wellbeing is learning how to build relationships, self-manage, be socially aware. Those are important skills for students to have. So we can be proactive now in student wellness rather than reactive. And that's been what we've tried to implement at the district. And I believe through my research that Forest Hills is committed to supporting mental health, given the number of social workers and counselors that you have. I'm eager to learn more about the mental health liaisons and that model that is in place. And I do think it's really important and it's an issue that hits close to home for me and would be one that I would be committed to leading the district.
That's great. My question is, what strategies have you used or do you use to recruit and retain diverse and talented teaching and administrative staff?
So talented and diverse are two very important pieces. Obviously, the diversity piece, we talked about why that's so important. And then talented staff, skilled staff, we know from research how important adults are in children's lives and the power of an effective teacher and a skilled teacher and student learning. So we absolutely have to focus on talent and we have to focus on diversity. Those are both very important. I think that starts with your job posting. As early as a job posting. So our job postings need to convey the exact skills and abilities that we need, the talent that we're looking for. But it also needs to convey our openness to diversity and the welcome of diversity and that we embrace that. And then when we distribute our job postings, it's important that we're not just doing that on the AppleTrack site through the ISD. That's a great resource for those who know to go there and do that and who are familiar with our ISD. But we really need to be more thoughtful and deliberate in where else we're putting out the postings, particular colleges and universities, teaching programs, job fairs that we're attending. So really being intentional and broadening our reach in that area. And once we have the candidates here, the process that we go through in terms of interviewing, we need to have diverse people sitting at the interview table so that they can see themselves at the table. We need to have questions that we ask candidates. Need to be sensitive to diversity and our openness and acceptance of people. And then for talent, I think it's important that staff members who are interviewing have authentic tasks so we can see their talents and skills in action. So if we're interviewing a teacher, they're going to do a demonstration lesson so we can see that in action. We want to see how they interact with students. If we're hiring a technician, we might give them a task related to computers. If we're hiring a business person, we might ask them to create a spreadsheet with formulas or something like that. So having authentic tasks to really assess the talents and skills. And then once they're on board, I think it's really important that we give them the tools and resources to do their job. Excuse me. We train them, we build their capacity. And as fast as we can, we compensate them with good, strong benefit packages. And they become our best recruiters. When we have happy, fulfilled employees, they tell other people about that and bring those people in. So it's a multi-pronged approach.
Great, thank you so much for that. We've been offering quality programs in everything we do in Forest Hills, including the fine arts, career technical programs, athletics, et cetera. How do you develop curriculum and opportunities for students that equitably meet the needs of all of the students, but while maintaining quality throughout all of that programming?
I think that one of the greatest strengths of Forest Hills is the diversity of the program. It really speaks to all the, all the finance programs, the CTE programs, multiple athletics, the immersion program, the flex program, transition program, community service. There's so much here to offer students and it really taps into all their interest and gifts. But having so many programs, the challenge there is how do you maintain them and ensure that you're delivering high-quality services and students have access to those? And the risk of being really basic in elementary, I kind of view the programs of a district as a vegetable garden, let's say. You have all your programs, you have a row of broccoli and carrots and cauliflower. And those are your different programs. You have to tend to those over time and monitor them and adjust them and make sure that they're being nurtured and in place and kids are accessing them. And you have to notice when they're being used and not used. So if all of a sudden your broccoli's gone and your carrots are gone, but your cauliflower is still all sitting there, something's changed. Did the quality of the program change? Or did the interests of the students change? Did the priorities of the district change? That happens over time. We don't always have the same priorities. We don't always have the same interests. And our programming has to adapt to that. And so I think about the IB program at East. That, that was not a program that was going to be put in place until the time was right and it was needed. When I started the principalship at the high school, the debate program was the be-all and end-all at the high school. It was top-notch and talked about everywhere and it was worship, sacred cow. And all of a sudden, no one wanted to do debate. And you're like, why is no one doing debate? And it wasn't about quality. We the People came up. And We the People stole the show. Although there were a couple of people in debate, we had to really look at, where are the priorities? Where are the interests? And we have to move and shuffle to those programs to ensure that we're really focused on the ones that meet the interest at the time. And I saw that play out over the decades, from robotics to We the People, now it's Mylea UN. And then it's lacrosse. And now we want a beach volleyball team. And that happens and that's beautiful. Those kids can have opportunities. But it's important that those who are looking at, we're staying focused, keeping the eye on the ball and making sure it's high-quality and we're meeting their business.
Thank you. Please describe your experiences with military novels, bond proposals, and sinking funds. Would your experience be successful, why do I not?
A lot of variety and different experiences along those lines. Certainly been part of initiatives to build a sinking fund, practice sinking fund, renew sinking funds, operate the millages from that end. As well as bonds, at East Fair Rapids, participated in many different capacities in bonds. We had a bond there that didn't pass and we had to go back to the drawing board and bring it back out. And then it passed after that. But I think my most experience, really leading the bond initiative effort, was most recently at St. Joseph. So we understood through our facility assessment and our strategic plan and master planning that we had a lot of needs in the district. So we spent a great deal of time, over a year and a half of time, preparing a bond school through that facility assessment, through community input and surveys to understand what the needs of the district are, just in terms of infrastructure and facilities. But also, where's our vision for the future? Where's our programming needs? Where do you want to go? And over a year and a half, we were able to bring that together and with the board. They recently called the election for May. So we're in the midst right now of, so we prepared it. We presented it to the community and to the board. And we are now in the promotion phase. So we're full on in that informational campaign, advocacy campaign. Last night I was there till around ten o'clock, working with all the parent volunteers on that advocacy piece. And so we're really hopeful and have a heavy lift in the next two months to get that passed. We're excited to get it passed and then we do the hard work of the product that we're making sure that what, what the community is contributing to, that we are good stewards of the dollars and fulfilling the vision of the bond and completing those projects on time and on budget. We're able to do that at East and hopefully we'll do it at St. Joseph as well.
Thank you. Can you provide us an example of a time in your career when you made a mistake? When you received an instructive feedback and were asked to take corrective action? What process and communication plan did you implement and what was the outcome?
So I've made my share, fair share of mistakes. I don't think you can be in this industry as an educational leader without making mistakes. I've made those and I've coached many administrators along the way who've made similar mistakes. And what I've learned in that process is that when you make a mistake, the best thing that you can do is own it and take responsibility for it and come up with an action plan to repair harm and then don't make the mistake again. So that's my learning from the multiple mistakes I've made over the years. But one of the hardest mistakes that I had to take was an assembly that we delivered at the high school. And we had student speakers and staff speakers. We worked with the students on the messaging, what that is. And we had communicated with the adult speakers as well. During the assembly, some of the content of one student and the content of one of the adult speakers was clearly having an unintended emotional impact on some of the students. And as I was watching this, I could see this, uh-oh, this is not good. I did not vet these speakers well enough. I did not vet these speakers well enough. So I musically found a social worker and a counselor and I said, we need to get to the kids that maybe can see are having this emotional response. And then I pulled a few teachers aside as the students were going back to class and said, what's the pulse? What are kids saying? And how bad is this? And they were like, it's pretty bad from this standpoint. And so at that point, we pulled the leadership team together, called the superintendent and say, uh-oh, this is going on. Let me know. And worked with her and others to create a communication plan. So the first thing we did is we provided our teachers with talking points that they could go into the classroom and talk to the students about what occurred, why it occurred, and then give resources to students where they could go if they needed more support in regard to what had occurred. And then we had communication that was crafted that went to parents in a timely way, that was factual, whereby all of the mistake, and talked about resources that they could use to support their child if their child came home. And talked about the experience and what year they can go afterwards. And through that experience, that was a really hard experience because at its core, it harmed students. And that was really difficult as a leader of students and we loved those that students were harmed. And it was a hard situation to lead through because it was my mistake. And I really came to appreciate the leadership team that I had that was able to step in and really walk with me on that process. And great, great communication. And we were able to support kids. It took some time to repair that harm, but we haven't repeated the mistake.
Thanks. How would you evaluate the current climate and culture of our district? From what you know or have been able to see? And how does the superintendent help to improve the climate and culture of the district?
So climate and culture of a school building or a district is really important. It is like the heart of the district, of the school. And you can see it, you can feel it, and you can touch it. And, but at its core, it's a reflection of the district's values and its principles, what it believes in. And the superintendent absolutely has a role in ensuring that that culture is in place, that it reflects the values, and that it's fostered and continued over time. So what's most important for the superintendent to do is to know what the values and priorities and vision is. And that comes from the board, that comes from the strategic plan. And that way, when you have a culture, you have to allocate resources to it, time, effort, dollars, and resources. And so a superintendent ultimately controls those resources in some sense and so can make sure that they're allocated. Then you have to be able to talk about, as a superintendent, the culture and the values and the principles and the visions all the time and weave it into everything that is done. It's important that we celebrate when the culture is really at its peak, that someone models the culture or sees the culture, that we model that ourselves and we celebrate it. And what's also important is a culture is only as strong as its weakest link. And so when we're not in line, whether it's a student or an administrator or a teacher, that in a respectful, dignified way, that you address that deviation to ensure that we're all on the bus and moving in the same direction and we're prioritizing our priorities. And as a superintendent, it's really simple. You know, we want clean facilities and well-worked facilities. When I walk down the hallway and there's trash, I pick it up. We support kindness and caring for others. When I walk in a building and a student holds a door for me, I thank them for being kind and caring. We prioritize safety. We're going to allocate dollars to safety. Being responsive to the community, we need to make sure we're answering emails in twenty-four to forty-eight hours in some sense. So it's really simple little things like that that come together. In terms of evaluating the culture of Forest Hills, it's really important, number one, to understand what we're evaluating against. Because it's a reflection of the values and the principles and the vision, we need to make sure that we understand what that is. That's the standard. And you clearly articulate the building principles on your website and your mission, your vision. But in terms of that action steps and where we're going in the future, we're still looking to make that leap. And so having that in place and then measuring everything you do against those, is our culture aligned to that? And when it is, we celebrate it, we talk about it, and we address it when it's not there. So what I evaluate for St. Hills, I'll look for what the priorities are. And then it's observing and watching people interact, listening to conversation, hearing what people say, what people do. Those are all culture and a reflection of those priorities. So that's how I evaluate it in collaboration with others.
Thanks. Would you please explain to us what your plan would be to implement a strategic plan?
To clarify the plans, the process is in that we have the plan and whether it's implemented, is that where we're at? Yeah, I kind of like that doubling up of the word plan in there.
Pointing the plan?
That kind of throws it off, but yes. So once the strategic plan is in place, what's really important is that it's not a plan that's implemented by one. Ideally, the plan was built collectively. It's a shared vision. It's a collective vision. And so it needs to be implemented by all, not just the board or not just the superintendent or just the building principles. But it's, it's got to be done by everyone. And what we did at St. Joseph is, after we had developed the plan and have the priorities in place, we created a format that we could communicate it in that was really concise and consistent so that we could go out and promote the plan. Here's the plan. This is what it says. It's very user-friendly. And we did that, that in a multifaceted way. We did that through, you know, your traditional email. We did Mailer's Home. We rolled it out at our opening day with the entire staff and did that at board meetings. So we made sure people knew it was out there. But then in terms of actually implementing and doing the work, in August, we finished the plan in early July and in August, at a leadership team retreat, we took the plan and basically said, okay, this is our vision that we've created together with the help of all these people. And it's our job to manage and supervise the implementation of this. And so each of us, we called it our gifts. And we gifted an outcome, at least one, and then some of us had more than that. In which, they weren't responsible to make it happen. They were just responsible to manage the process of implementation, create an action plan, and then do the reporting back and monitoring back. And so every administrator had responsibilities. And we set up timelines and said, okay, in a month, you need to come to lead team, leadership team and present your action plan and your tentative timeline for your item. And we vetted those together and then we took that information and presented it to the board. And then we did another update to the board. We did the pre-work at the leadership team meeting. And then in between, they're doing the work and so it's changing over time. And we'll do another update to the board in July. So they know that progress is being made and that it's guided by the entire leadership team and we're monitoring it over time and we're adjusting to that piece. So that process has worked pretty well so far. We're a year into it and there's a couple glitches that we've worked out. But for the most part, that's been a very effective way to collectively implement and make sure we're staying in tune with that. And then the other piece that we're really conscious about is we always tie our strategic plan back to everything we're doing. So the assistant superintendent of curriculum, every time she's running a curriculum meeting, she knew, this is part of our strategic plan and this is this bullet in our strategic plan. And as part of our strategic plan, we're always saying the word strategic plan and which bullet it is. And people kind of tease us about that. And they're like, is this part of your strategic plan? We're like, yes, it is. And so it's just woven into the fabric now and part of how we do our work and how is our work.
Wonderful. I have a lot of questions.
Okay.
Superintendents are often faced with the challenge of making decisions when there is no clear right answer and members of our community are split on the right to head forward. Talk about a time when you were faced with a difficult decision where you knew there were people unhappy with your decision, no matter what you chose to do. How did you go about making that decision and getting people on board with the direction you determined was best?
I think I got it.
Yep.
Okay. So unfortunately, that's most of the decisions a superintendent makes, is that there's never really a clear right or wrong answer. And that's the nature of this job and this goal. And one of the reasons it is challenging is because you can never please everyone. And what I found in making decisions like that is to know going in that not everyone's going to be happy, but to make sure you do your due diligence, you use data, you do your research, you have a rationale of why or why not, so that you can say, I know you don't agree with what, the decision I made, but I want you to understand the process and that it was rational and logical and these are the reasons why you chose A over B from that standpoint. And so that, because we have to make decisions about that all the time, that's something that has been effective in terms of that type of decision-making. Thinking of an example of that, one of the situations that I dealt with as assistant superintendent at East Fair Rapids in my end of the tenure there was having to, our priorities changed over time. And we knew we needed to implement one instructional coaching into the elementary school day to support the read write third grade law. And we also needed to be more deliberate and intentional in our teaching of social emotional learning aspects. And so the only way to fit more in is to adjust the schedule. And so that meant adjusting the schedule. And that meant touching And that meant touching a very highly-regarded, respected Spanish, K-5 Spanish program. Not an immersion program, but a K-5 Spanish program that, over the years, has been nationally recognized and state-recognized. And we were going to touch it. And that was not going to be popular no matter what. But our priorities had shifted and these other two priorities. And we had to look at that program and say, how can this look different without and not get rid of it? We still need this. This is an important program. It matters to our kids. It matters to what we're doing. But we have to deliver it in a different way. And so we, we knew that was going to be a difficult lift. And we knew that if we just came up with a solution ourselves, that that wouldn't go over very well at all. And so we talked about who should be at that table. And we brought in all the special teachers. We brought in middle school Spanish teachers and high school Spanish teachers, even though it wasn't going to touch their schedule and the building principles. And really sat down and rather telling them what we were going to do, we said, here's the end goal. We have to, we have to have a place to deliver social, social, emotional strategies to our students. We need a place that we can have instructional coaching occur with our teachers. And we need to have specials in Spanish. But it can't look the same because we can't have all that. We can't have it all. And so we gave them that end result and said, we got to get here, but we need you guys to tell us what the best way is. And they were able, that group of individuals was able to come up, I think they came up with dozens and dozens of schedule options of what that could look like. And they vetted the pros and cons. And they would go back to their teams and talk about the pros and cons. They'd come back together. And by the end, when you go through that process together, you understand all the different options and you begin to coalesce around one again. And consensus bubbles up. So by the time they'd gone through all that, we had a solution. Was it perfect? No. But we had a really strong rationale and it was developed by the people on the ground who were going to be implementing it and impacting it. And we adjusted how we did Spanish. And we didn't do away with Spanish. And it wasn't perfect, but we met our new priorities and we did it collectively. And that worked out well. I hope I answered every part of that question.
You did.
I did? Okay.
Yes.
Kind of got lost a little bit.
It's great.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. What is the biggest risk you have taken to do what's right for children?
I don't want to use the same example twice, so. So I like to think that I don't take big risks. I take intelligent risks. I think taking risks is important. That's how we innovate and change and meet new challenges. But I don't like to take a blind risk. So an intelligent risk is what I like to call a driver-driven risk from that standpoint. But I think where we may have danced on the line of big risk was our decision at least to return to in-person learning as early as we did. We came back in our childcare program in the summer of 2020, and we came back in person in the fall of 2020. And at that time, the pandemic and the information about the pandemic was very fluid. I refuse that word again, fluid and unprecedented, at that time. And so we had to be sure that we really had all our ducks in a row in order to do that. And so we researched, we were on the phone and Zoom calls with people in schools in Switzerland. I remember we were on a phone call in Denmark. We talked to health department people, doctors, anyone we could talk to about what's the best way to do this, what are the risks, what procedures should we have in place? What should that look like? And so when we embarked on that process as a team, we said, here's our vision, that we have, that we know that in-person instruction is the best instruction for students. And we need to get kids back in school. But we also understand that some people aren't ready to do that. So we need a model that will allow in-person instruction and virtual instruction at the highest quality level and be safe. That was the vision. And then we said, we cannot do this just designing our own process. We have to bring in all sorts of different voices because this is craziness. We don't even know what we're dealing with. And it's the middle of the summer and we're trying to figure this out. So I can remember being in the middle school media center and we had that big post-it paper all over the place. And we had students, parents, we had teachers, the association, we had custodians, maintenance people, administrators. And we had several hours of just, what can we do to accomplish this goal? What would it look like? What problems do we have? What are, what are we going to run into? What are the barriers? What should the processes and procedures be? Took all that information and I think we developed one of the best models and for continued learning. And it kind of literally called them, then, how do they learn these plans? I can't remember the word changes. But our implementation plan around COVID, I, I'm very proud of. I thought it was a well-researched, collective endeavor that really met the needs. And we made our teachers, we asked our teachers to do a really hard lift, which was to teach in person at the same time, sign-on pass to kids sitting at home. And so kids at home were getting live instruction in our classrooms by our teachers, and they were having to juggle back and forth. That was a big ask of our teachers and we really had to make sure we were providing the tools and resources and support for them to do that. And it was a safety risk and because we didn't know what was safe and what wasn't. And we had to really ensure we had sound processes and procedures and communicate those very well. So it was that collective vision. It was leading collectively, being clear in our communication. But it was a risk at that time. In hindsight, it was a good risk.
Thank you. This is my favorite question.
It is?
Okay. If you got to dream big, what would the secondary education look like? What are the major obstacles you see to achieving this?
I got to get outside my box. Having been part of the whole Michigan curriculum implementation, I have a big understanding of secondary from that standpoint. What I would say is, if I could be completely outside of the box, I think we give high school education as upside down. It's content-based and content-driven. Kids take classes in subjects and they earn credits in subjects. And then they graduate and do all sorts of things with those different subjects. I think by high school, we should be a skill-based curriculum and that we take, we earn credits by being proficient and advanced in skills and we use content to deliver those skills. So that way, I like developing this idea right here as I'm sitting. So, excuse me for adding an example. So that way, I think you create a lot of flexibility in the programming that you deliver. You're not tied to these content credit requirements. So you could have all sorts of different content areas that students could choose from and interest to choose from that are relevant to them and fit with their needs and authentic to the real world and deliver those skills through all those different contents. But you're earning credit in the skill. And so identifying, the skill becomes the standard. So, I don't know, we're going to have thinking skills, critical thinking skills, active thinking skills, management research skills, analyzing data, determining relevancy. We're going to have communication skills, presentation, written, oral, social skills, time management, organization, prioritization. Those become the standards and the content is just the conduit through which you reach those. That's my genius idea sitting right here. That is a good question.
Thank you. Thank you. How do you ensure that people know and understand you have heard them?
Comes back to the communication piece. So I think first of all, again, we have to have spaces where people can be heard. And that can look very different. That can be processes in place that allow people to communicate with different people in the district. It can be being visible in the district, out and about where people can do that. And thinking about a one-on-one meeting, I'll use that context. This is a skill that I think I've gotten much better at over time. In my younger years, I was really quick to be like, what am I going to say? What am I going to say? While they're talking or quick to defend or quick to justify or quick to explain. And I think as I've gotten older, I've learned to really sit back and listen and hear what they're saying and seek understanding. And so I think just that mindset comes across in body language and in words that they're being heard. So leaning in, asking only clarifying questions, not interrupting, and taking the time to really understand. And then being able to articulate back to them what they said. This is what I heard you say. This is what you're concerned about. And understanding what you want the result to be. You can determine the result, what you want that to look like. And then acknowledging that, okay, I'm going to take this action in regard to your concern or your idea. And then once I follow through on the action, I will move back with you to let me know or understand. Or so-and-so will move back with you and I'll check in with them to make sure they've done that. So that's a way, like in the moment, to make sure that they've been heard. So I think it's being responsive, taking the time, acknowledging, summarizing, being responsive, taking action, following back up and doing what you're saying they're going to do.
All right. What are the key elements needed to establish and maintain a good working relationship between you and us as the board?
So prior to sitting in the superintendent's seat, I knew there was a relationship between superintendent and board, but you're not in, in the mix of it. You kind of see it from afar and don't really know what's involved. And once you sit in that seat, you realize how absolutely vital that relationship is and how intense it is, not from a negative standpoint, but just it's, we're together a lot and it's important that it's unified, team united in doing that. And so having good working relationships is vital with the board. And I've been really fortunate with the board that I currently have. Some people are like, why are you leaving the board? Why are you doing this? And I say, that is a great board. I love my board, but there's some opportunities we ought to explore. But I think first and foremost, what I did at St. Joseph was, I want to know who you are as professionals, as people, want to build a relationship with you so I understand why you're sitting here, what your investment is, what your priorities are as an individual and as a board. And really have that connection as human beings. And so I took time when I began my position there to have coffee, breakfast with every single board member one-on-one and really establish that foundation that we can build on. And we continue those in many capacities over the last few years. And so that was really important, just to build that relationship. And then once that is, I think, number one is, we both have very important roles and responsibilities in the district, but they're not the same roles and responsibilities. And we have to understand what each of ours are and support each others in those, but not cross over. Because when we cross over, it gets muddy and we're not serving the students. But when we're doing our jobs, then we're serving the students. So understanding the board's role in setting vision and priorities, working with budget, working with policy, being a liaison with the community, advocating for public education, communicating with me, understanding my role as managing the day-to-day supervision of the district, the management of the district, keeping the board informed and updated so there's no surprises. It's like my first thought. I got to call the board, got to tell the board, got to talk to the board. That needs to happen all the time so that you're not surprised of what's occurring. And then my responsibility in working with you and making recommendations on your priorities and you knowing that I've done the due diligence around that with the team that's in place for that. So knowing the most responsibilities. And then it comes back to communication. We can't just be like, we're going to communicate. We have to have norms and protocols and procedures around our communication that we're going to, we don't want two board members to have information that the other board members don't. Everyone needs to have the same information that they're working on, working from on the same basis. And so a great way to establish that role identification and communication protocols and norms of working would be to have a retreat with the board or a work session in which we develop and talk about that and make commitments to each other around that. And then just that no surprise element is really important for working in a relationship so that you can trust me and I can trust you in terms of that, that communication. And that's been a rewarding part of being a superintendent, is working with the board. And I've enjoyed building those relationships and successfully moving the district forward in that collaboration. So, I would report about.
Thank you very much. I'm going to breathe a little bit because the official grilling is over. So, but now is the time, though, if you have any questions for us, please feel free.
Okay. I'll keep it really limited. But I would say, I heard that at one of the entry points, I think you said that you're looking for a leader that Forest Hills needs now. And so I'm curious, what, what does Forest Hills need right now in your opinion? What is, what, what timing and what is needed?
I think we're going to have slightly different, but similar answers. It's a related.
That's okay. Lots of needs or lots of opportunities.
Yeah, that can come from so many different areas. I think one thing that FHPS needs now is cohesive communications. I think that's something that we've been struggling with for a while. We have been very lucky to have superintendents that have stayed a long time. And that has provided some great opportunities to work on things long-term and to have stability. But it's also had an effect of, well, this is the way we do things. If we always do things this way, and things have changed over the last several years. And I think establishing a better means of communication with all of the people, with students, with staff, with community members, with everybody, to make sure that everybody is still on the same page and understands where we are moving is, is something that is needed to look at right now.
I think, I think too, I would agree with everything that Dr. Fossey said. I would also add, and you alluded to this, Forest Hills is a very high-performing, high-achieving district. We have a large appetite, I think, for innovation and new ideas. And so I just think a continual evaluation of what is serving us still and what is not serving us anymore and applying some really good systems and processes to those decisions.
I would say, since COVID, right? I think there's been a lot of trust that needs to be restored with community. And I think a lot of that's based on, you know, more communication that need to go out and listening to what our constituents and our parents and students would like to have. And I think sometimes a more transparency on things that are important to them may not be for everybody, but it's important. But I think the biggest thing is just building that bridge back since we went through this kind of unforeseen time, that it was just kind of building those bridges back and then bringing the community back and gathering the community back together the way what Forest Hills really thrives on. I think that's the biggest thing for our kids leaning into is, the teachers are part of the community and the workers are a part of the community. You know, we have family members that show up to games and stuff and are part of the community. So I think it's just building that, building that bridge of, you know, trust and harmony back with each other. The only thing I'll add is we have a really young board. So somebody that's willing to come in and help us learn how to do all those things together and follow the rules and the rules and responsibilities and make sure that, you know, communication leads back to trust and we all, like you said, stay in our lanes and do our job and take care of our kids.
I guess I would just add one operationally, because I completely agree with the intangibles probably being our biggest need. But I think the last decade of Forest Hills has seen a big jump into 21st century learning and pockets of project-based learning and a lot of innovation happening and piloting. And we have a lot of successful things that we've done in that regard. And we're right now, in the process of this, I think of, how does that become? And we're right now, in the process of this, I think of how does that become everywhere in our district? And how is that equitable across the district? How do we take what's working and what's not working and decide, you know, what becomes common everywhere in Forest Hills, not just in pilot program, as I said?
That's helpful, thanks. Any other questions for us?
I don't, I'll leave it at one.
Okay, that's fine. And would you like to offer a closing statement?
I would.
Okay, good, thank you.
I assume that all of the candidates that you're considering have comparable degrees and experiences in education and desires to serve Forest Hills. And on paper, we probably look very much alike and are not differentiated very much. But I want to assure you that I am a different candidate. And what separates me from the others is first and foremost, my natural fit with Forest Hills. And that's because of what I see as shared values and values. And I've been really intentional in choosing to apply here. And that came only after a great deal of research and reflection to affirm that match between your values and principles and mission and vision in my own. And because I believe that match is imperative for us to be successful and for the superintendent to be successful in the district. And having worked, lived in Grand Rapids and worked in county educational environment and interacting with Forest Hills and then through extensive research, I have been able to learn and affirm several different things about Forest Hills. You certainly are committed to excellence, you have high standards personally, high expectations. And I believe those are fundamental as well to success. I appreciate how much you strive to learn and grow and try and get better. And you try to partner with others to do that work. And that's something that I pride myself on as well, to really be better tomorrow than I am today. And I operate way better as a team member collectively and feel that we're better together than we are working alone. The other thing that I've learned and affirmed and that's appealing to me is the wide variety of opportunities that Forest Hills does have for students. It really shows that you value each individual student and their needs. And it creates an inclusive, belonging community and the power of opportunities, the power of need. And developing every student's whole child, their academic, their social, emotional, physical, their artistic, is so important so that they can achieve their potential. And I truly believe in that as well. And then the other piece that really attracted me and what I affirmed is that here at Forest Hills, the school's in the community and you just alluded to that, at one. The teachers live here, the staff live here, it's one place. And they work together to support the residents and the students and the community services that the district provides, is a testament to that. You see the individual school spirit, like you're still one Forest Hills. And that, I embrace that as well. I grew up in a community with that similarly, really tight bond with its school district. And I was educated at an institution with an insane level of school spirit. And so it's those high expectations and that trust and respect and collaboration, communication, opportunities, learning. We share some of those same values and I feel like I can be guided by those principles as well. And given that, my job as superintendent is to represent the district and to be the face of the district. And because our values align, I'd be able to do that really well. It wouldn't be an act, it's kind of genuinely who I am. And that makes me a really a natural fit for Forest Hills. I think I'm also a different candidate because I have a proven success record living in and working in, leading communities and districts that are just like Forest Hills. I did try growing up in Grand Rapids at the University of Michigan. They're really sizable, diverse communities, yet both locations, both communities really pride themselves in having that connected, small feel. And Forest Hills has that too. It's a big community, yet a diverse community, yet has a connectedness and a smaller feel in many ways. And that's the kind of environment which I prove to be a very effective contributor and leader from that standpoint. And then I also believe that I'm right for Forest Hills and different than the other candidates because I bring a unique skill set. I am able to see those challenges as opportunities, to leverage people's strengths, to take those intelligent risks. And I feel I bring a really strong skill set for leading a collaborative change process. And so it's that skill set and it's the proven success in other districts that I've led at St. Joseph's in East Grand Rapids where there's similarly high expectations and strong community engagement, deep traditions of excellence. And my natural fit that really leads me here and leads me to know that I'm the right fit for Forest Hills and different than the other candidates that you're looking at. Forest Hills is a district that has great schools and there's so much to offer. But even great schools, in my experience, can and they must get better. And it doesn't matter what their past or their present are. They have to continually grow their capacity and meet the needs of students. And I believe that together with you and the leadership team, that we can elevate this district and we can leverage its strengths and we can honor its deep roots and its rich traditions to take it to the other level. And I know in that process that I will work harder and I'll work smarter than many other people that have sat at this table. It's a flaw in my character, I've applied a very strong work ethic my entire life and I don't see myself setting that aside anytime soon. And I really appreciate the power of working hard and working smart and working together with others. And I'm really excited about the opportunity to join you as a staff and community on that endeavor. And I hope that we can continue this conversation in the near future to learn more about how I'm going to be able to do. Appreciate you having the time here this evening and being able to have this conversation.
All right, well, thank you very much. We appreciate your interest in this position and you taking the time out of your very busy day to come up here. And we'll be talking with you soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I just want to say, I just want to say, who has the genius idea for this yesterday?
It was a collective effort because we said we got a bunch of seats yesterday.
I talked to Val today, I'm like, Val, we need to bring better shirts out. This is genius, I might need to go.
We were preparing for our eight or nine.
I've been sending notes.
I know, me and I were sitting next to each other. We were texting.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. I'm right. So we're good.
I mean, we need to talk it out because we've not been.
You've heard me, right?
I don't disagree, yes.
But it gives me, it's wonderful, I'm just going to nod my head.
You're just going to nod your head.
Have a good night.
That makes it hard.
Go ahead and do that, I will continue.
What do you want us to pray for?
Yes, I went, I wore it out. Well, really six weeks, it's not really a game back.
Correct, yeah, thanks, I know Davis. Just showing the status for me.
Well, we got four. Should she like? This time. One's in there. So, I mean, that is a good place. No, I am totally kidding, I am totally kidding.
All right. I was going to say, I'm down for JT. I will, I will have a chip in there.
And then hopefully on a different side, I mean, first definitely, to do things to help it. She's, I, I feel like, but that's the way it's global, right? Yes, it'll hopefully, Celine West is going to, oh, okay, yeah. Maybe one of the top of my shoes. I'm the most. So one of the peers that's on it, I think we're selling the same date, yeah, peers, date, the tours, we expect to leave that summer for the last five. I was going to grab some, but I decided I might have it over here. So, change your course down here.
Seriously?
Oh, you did?
Yeah, man, that's an hour and four hours. It's actually four more times, so I held my.
Oh my gosh, that would be crazy, so maybe I'll have to just pencil it in and you can let me know.
I don't know, it was like a time, it was, I got it, I'm going to go back to these questions. I do have it, but I don't want to say something.
No, no.
Yeah, wait, 2021. The reason I can say that, the reason I can say that is because I held them back deliberately so people would never know. And once the minute they said.
Well, that sounds like a good plan, thank you for telling, I'll let me, yeah, you're welcome, thank you.
He's fine, he's fine. Ah, you mean on that, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't. I don't know. I'm definitely the brown child.
The other thing is that you don't have to. The first, sorry about that. I was going to say, like, I want you to come here. I was rather fond of.
You don't want to come back, well, it's fine.
And you should come back, that's why I don't want. And again, I'm sorry that.
And I will re-skin it to get a little bit of candidates yesterday, so that way they have clusters of.
All right. You have that worked out, well, that's it again.
And then you guys are going to take home your folders to see if you can start to digest and look at your notes. Oh, good, we can now?
Maybe hold them accountable for time and keep getting them. Call it strikes and strikes.
I'm speaking to Goldie, yes? I don't know.
Again, it's the same thing, but from a, from a, from a standpoint, the way the question.
There you go.
You know, this day you say.
Yeah, at the end of the semester.
Four candidates are very distinct. And if you know, yes, and if you know the keys that are being.
I am very curious about that.
You'll understand that really, and if you're in the past three, four years, you'll know exactly what you're talking about.
But I am, indeed, here, just by standing, just sitting there and seeing. Yeah, that's funny, that's an update. Oh, I, I'm loving it. Actually, all of that right now, since I'm in a position. Um, I was, I mean, even if I've gotten more, like, two weeks before the tour starts, I felt very fortunate. So, but I'm taking out a little couch and, and it's, it's housed at Wesley's, it's preparatory. And, I mean, it's like, I was, I'm great. I know that when I, whether, just students that, and they are.
Correct, correct.
Advertizers. And, and that's great, that's actually to hold down a house when they're like, oh, I'm being with them. Like, it's not a bad. Like, it's not a bad. And I'm teaching presentation tech. Um, which is my.
So I mean, the nepotism.
Communication. That's my secondary. Yeah.
I really would.
Well, yeah, that's, that's what I love. And right now, they're doing a project and I have to teach design thinking and questioning skills and, and listening. I'm just. I am very happy. But I am also spending all the time thinking about what is my next step in this? Cause I'm not so much teaching. I was just. And I did visit today for the first time since I left in this room. And I cried. It's not. I just came to the.
Isn't it just sound lazy?
Yeah, go work. And I shot myself when I was just crying. And my friends. This was my home for two years and I, and I love it and. God, I'm watching this. What was. I was like. I'm not so. I just. No. I think I love it. I love education far too much. So I just, you know. A little holding. Today I was just remembering. Yes.
This man here was a big help.
Many.
Very good.
Um, during.
I think I've heard it. When they had in person, both at two o'clock in the morning.
What would you do? What would it look like for you to be? Yeah. And I'm just trying to add here. It's just like, I've got no interest. But I'm wondering now, maybe. Maybe I kind of.
I'm a child myself. Cause I.
Oh, wow. Some of the same things, or you same goals.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Well, I see. Cause one thing that was, I'll talk. I see some kids in the class at all. It's. Education wise. I don't know what they did.
Yeah. They can talk you so.
Really pleasant eyes. She made me a beautiful woman. She did all my.
Yeah.
Give her credit. I mean, someone who respects. That's what really tough.
Really active with everybody. So I got her up. To read the questions. And we had a assignment. Ah. I look up. I want you all. Oh, everybody's. But she did.
No, I bet she did.
So I said. Okay, I'm gonna pick one. I really want her because I know she. Cause that.
Well, that would have been.
They can do it. Understand. She did.
She did.
Oh, she did. Wonderful. And I, I think I said. Right. She went back to the big file. All of a sudden, she started. And she got. Always takes.
You can't always be successful. And then.
Again, otherwise this is.
There are people that go down that way.
I get COVID. We had the first, where we started playing basketball. I can buy a revenue for girls. Second, third.
I know, I just.
So they're all like.
You can just run it, didn't you? You didn't. The other one.
So I mean. Interact with it.
I'm just thinking of how. I know, I know.
Do you like a good podcast?
Oh, this must have been. Same.
You're talking.
Yeah.
To school or you say, I know that they have.
Should I ask?
Was it all different?
There you go.
But what's fun.
Said in five words.
I thought you wanted to.
Yeah.
Already asked the ball, football. Have a big assembly. Signing table, guy size. Oh, I think I might wanna be part of this, or I wanna be part of the player. I wanna be Odyssey. Have them sign up. Let them know and understand the fun. Cause I saved that thing. I was the one who went on Forest, uh, the Forest Field major in that. And. The morning. I put it down.
Well, are you using? It's here, so. I'm, I'm using.
Yeah, that was me getting that out there.
Good to see you.
Should we have those other?
Um, I just stuck away. No, no, I'll just take. Some of the questions.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah. Oh, I see.
You'll see some redone. That's okay. So district numbers tomorrow night. You'll read after the one hour. Laterly, I have to go right here and all this. Listen to you now. When I was speaking, plan, where we're talking to people and then we'll go second process. Only on. Who's like to speak first and how the chart began. This is what. Each one of you individuals. What's the next point? Chart goes up. You do this pretty simple decision that may not.
Are you gonna ask for top two or three? Today, okay.
As some people might say to this. People might say I'd like to. But remember, that's not your vote in the end. It's just.
Your initial crushes.
Right. So after this. Right. So Holly may give you two names. And then you may give you three. And then after you're all set and done then, Holly may say, you know what? Yeah, I know. It's during the eight. We'll figure that out as a group.
And we have that scheduled for the.
Yes.
Twenty of them. Twenty of them may be as a. Because we have our regular meeting. Yes.
So the nineteenth, what we're hoping to do is check out. An open house. That's kind of where I am. I hired two interviews from like three thirty to five. And maybe about thirty. The other night. So the open house of all candidates. I didn't really coming. I don't want you on the same so far. Board members can be there. Have those a lot few, if you're there, you I'm sure. We're potentially be. So far. Um, we'll go into the interviews. Somebody wants to take like a. Step out, get there or something they like. And then that night, we're all set and done. The same. Project. We're all set. See you guys. We get that seven. Get there if we did.
And the question. I would say the questions for those are gonna be more organic in nature.
I'm gonna write some from my. You guys will also have. Those who also better. So we're all set and done. We could have a list of thirty or forty questions. The first twenty minutes of that could be a presentation with. So it's a ninety degree point. Come into the district, probably gonna meet people, understand programs, look at operations and so forth. It gives you an opportunity to see their presentation skills. Are they just going to present something, something like the teacher? Or can they talk about? Also, they may answer some of your questions during the presentation. But what'll be different is I'm gonna ask you to print off your own list of questions. Let's say forty. You end up with. Take your highlighter or some kind of marker on them. They're marked questions that you think are most important to you. Because then we start asking questions. Kristen, I think the best methodology I've seen of board presence of use is say, hey, Mary, would you like to give a question you'd like to ask? Kristen will wait across the table. And then you can repeat that. We still try to keep it to about seventy five minutes. But we wanna make sure what he gets her questions off.
Doing the presentation or after the presentation?
After the presentation. Because some of your questions will be answered during the presentation. Is my guess.
Now, what if, like, so one of the things I did when I listened to these first interviews is that I wrote down follow up questions that would be applicable to those particular officials. So how does that look then in a list of forty potential questions?
You will have questions that will pertain to both candidates. You will have questions that pertain to candidates.
Okay.
So when you submit questions to me, you're gonna have to identify.
Who that's.
Who this is for. If it's, it's both A or B.
Okay. So all of them, ever, ever creates their questions, submits them to you, you put them together with questions that. Put. It'll come back to us and then like just choose, pick and choose which ones.
Yes. Yeah, but I'll try to categorize them a little bit. Here's some under leadership. Here's some other political awareness. Here's some other communication. And they're not all that clear cut. But it gives you an idea of that really. But that's why I have time to make a marker or something and say, this is the question. I want. You're gonna help out.
So just so you understand this, in close session.
No, close.
No, close. Okay. So we don't go to close tomorrow. I mean, we talked everything.
Yes.
And even then, on the eighteenth, ninth, or the nineteenth, twentieth, that's all.
So we're all, okay. Okay, good. Cause I know.
Okay, we're in a close session.
Okay, perfect.
And then the other thing is, do you have a negotiating team? Usually it's a board president or a. Yeah, that's right. That's right. We already talked about that. So you've got a team set aside to start. Getting that contract ready.
Have you guys met initially yet?
Not.
Probably after tomorrow.
Yeah.
Is that, is that, I just, to re-ask, is that something you guys present to us first? That you get an idea or?
Were you gonna. Were you gonna give us an update on how that initial meeting goes in the Friday communications?
Yes, that's what we talked about. Okay. And so you have, um, an A as the analysis of all the indicators of conversation packages that everybody's standing for, but I may ask Julie to just speak and get this done up to you. Cause I think they have to be February. I'm sure it's the same, like, you never know. It would be. Isn't that crazy? Yeah, June, right? Yeah, so just make sure we're just we know that and like they decide like districts to be, um, Blue Fields and Celine's and the Juddison, whatever, you know, I need some of those. And just kind of give a little bit of sway and also run the state.
Like our sister districts, you mean?
And then we just try to get that done as quickly as possible. Then you may have a special meeting if you would like to. Get that contract approved by the entire board as a moving board approval. Sometimes the invite came with it and we can do that. As long as you know it's gonna be accepted by everybody. Right. Well, I've seen it happen. I've seen.
I'm sure.
Bennett Board meetings, never one of mine, I can say. Were they always bringing candidates in as they're hiring them? And then all of a sudden, it's not a seven of overs. You haven't voted in. There is hell. So what I always did as a superintendent, we would hire people. And then usually the next meeting or two, two of the head principals and useless teachers to the board, put a name to it. So you saw all the employees in the district. But the point there, that's.
Right.
The only exception to that can be. Basically, the CEO would be better called bigger. Otherwise, you'll be in the.
Not for a good reason. And then were we gonna do, um, a day next week where they come into the district for like a tour of the buildings?
Yes. We will do this.
That's not anything.
We have to post on a special.
No, it's not. I mean, it's, it's a couple of board members that will be available. Once we meet the final candidates, I will work with them immediately to come up with some dates. Well, maybe we should find out what, if any board members are available. Try to. See her in those.
Yeah, and we talked about like, maybe like a half day.
Yeah, half day, probably a little bit more. I, I, in fact, in my mind, I have two elementary schools available. But then they come to Central Office.
Central Office.
I know, unless.
Well, but I think, right in that time, but I think that's, uh, that would give them a case and board members are really there to escort them around. We'll have a chance to talk to them a little bit. Uh, leisurely talk as far as your car should come around or walk into a leisure, whatever. But the facilities will be that tour really definitely principal and immediate teacher as well.
And would they typically be done on the same day and just here at different buildings?
You could, in a district this size, absolutely. Yes. Uh, smaller districts, we get them in the morning, afternoon or different days or whatever. But we work with their schedules too, as I said. And most of them wanna do it in the morning so they can get back to their district in the afternoon in case of something. Which can happen.
The night that we go. Do we have a discussion of. We really seem to interact.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that would be, that would be hard to do in the decision making process too, because if somebody is just, uh. That way, I can't imagine any of the. Yeah, that was, I really care. I think they'll each do so, each that. Parents. You, you find there's some people more actively to do that.
Would it be helpful then if we set our availability to fail? If that was something we are interested in doing?
Yes. Yes. So you know, you can get away, you know, if Monday wins a Friday morning, you can send it to the. You, you. Excuse me. You start to set that up. You start to set up the location. Board members are also going to keep track of time and mutations. So only can be assigned thirty minutes per building and ten minutes in between or whatever the time is. Be careful to them. Cause I will tell you, they have principals, just like candidates will take more. Help people. So if you're gonna say, sorry, but you gotta get out next week.
Do I originally have that? That says candidates in school.
Yeah, the state.
Yeah, what is your.
Yeah, so, you know. Yeah, and nobody's coming from that part away where it should be a big deal. So it's. Very difficult, but we don't have to start exactly. The school starts even now, starting.
Can you have up to three people?
Yeah, I would suggest. Yeah, hang on. Perfect. So. But I would try. I don't, you shouldn't have to read the one members. Another. Looks like it would be great. Decide initial person to be. I have now heard that at every board of education meeting.
That's right.
I go with Holly. What other questions? They all have this all sent, sent to us in the morning again. So that was. Easy to do that. So I appreciate that.
Cause the only thing that I would say in my, it was sort of silly saying, but it's just as a reminder, is when we're discussing the board.